Okay, welcome everybody to the Town Board Work Session Tuesday, March 6th, 2018. And okay, so we missed you last week.
Sorry, I was watching my daughter defend her dissertation, which was really cool. Felt like what she must feel all the time, which is not understanding and dawnward than anybody's talking about. But I'm very proud and we now have a PhD now.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Really good.
That'd be kind of went around to everyone.
That's exciting.
Molecular and systems pharmacology, I understood nothing.
Her too, huh?
Yeah.
You're a doctor, you're a tourist doctor, don't matter.
Yeah, not so, not the same as them. So I got a shout out because at the end, they said that um, she said, you know, thank you mom. I have a cute story about my mom. I told you about some results for our um, our research and I said, hey mom, you know, they just weren't significant. And I said, honey, don't be ridiculous. Everything you do is significant. What if the whole place cracks up? And I turned to Jay and I'm like, I don't understand why this is happening here. So afterwards, they say to me, no, no, it's statistically significant. That's what, anyway, yeah. It was funny when you were there.
The point, the point remains though.
Yeah, the point remains was I cracked them off, so yeah, it's somewhat.
And it was significant.
It was significant, yeah. Anyway, so um, the first thing on the agenda this evening is the travel and reimbursement policy. So Ivy asked us in reviewing some of the requests for travel approvals, what exactly is our policy? Do we have one as far as out of town travel goes, reimbursement, things of that nature? And coming from New York State and coming from New York City, she was very used to the GSA travel rates for reimbursement, which are used widespread everywhere evidently except for us just here, which doesn't. Um, and which was sort of surprising. I thought that we were going to be the outlier, outlier and actually we're not. So um, other communities actually don't have any sort of policies regarding either out of state travel, out of town travel, reimbursements. They do ask their employees to always request government rates. People take advantage of tax exempt certificates because we don't, we're not allowed to reimburse for tax, obviously. Um, and then I asked our department heads basically just to go through so that the board would have an opportunity to take a look at the types of travel and conferences that our staff actually attends. Um, and so on the back of my memo, which is a new addition, um, because I apologize unfortunately, I got distracted with that whole storm thing going on and just never got back to it. Um, but Rob Deary was kind enough to put together a little Excel for me to help just organize the information. Um, each of the department heads sort of put together for the past three to five years, what their expenditures have been as far as training, out of town travel, conference attendance. And I thought it would be helpful for the board to see it from 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, just to get a feel for, you know, the percentage of, you know, how much money we spend on travel and what exactly it's spent with. Now during budget um, discussions, um, we request that our department heads literally itemize all of the conferences and trainings that they're planning on coming to during the course of the year. Um, the significant expenditures are planner because they have APA trainings that are on two-year cycles. One is on the East Coast, one is on the West Coast. Sabrina goes to the East Coast ones, but sometimes they're East Coast and they're quite, they're quite far. Um, so that's a significant one and the chief of police is a significant one who goes to a national training, a national conference of police chiefs every year. Um, and so um, basically I put it together for the board so that they could take a look. Um, there have been, there is going to be a significant uptick in our police training. Number one, just because of the climate and the types of um, training that unfortunately they're now required to have, but also the fact that our force is very young. And so we really need to keep them, bring them up to speed on a lot of things. Um, the state does a very good job of doing these training programs where it's almost like a train the trainer sort of thing. They, a number of them go to training on any firearms or security assessment. They come back and they're able to train other members of the police force and then we have more people that are trained and things like that. So um, so that's really been very effective. But one of the things I'd like the board to look at and what was, what was raised in our discussions was whether or not um, the board may want to take a look at some per diem meal limitations. Um, you know, as opposed to, you know, it being open-ended, that we put some stopgap measures into place. You know, what would be, what would be reasonable? We don't have that many people that actually get reimbursed for meals. Most of these travel conferences, certainly the training conferences, especially the police when they go to these, trying to remember what the place was in the middle of nowhere, um, in New York State. They have these training conferences and literally it's a convention center. They give them every meal so that there's no additional expenditures, just, you know, a meal going up there and we give them a car so the attendance not to be in minor reimbursement. Um, but certainly when we have out of town travel for those certain ones, um, maybe you want to take and put some per diem food in place? I mean, I don't know.
The one thing that's nice about benchmarking with the GSA rates that have been negotiated, as opposed to like Mamaroneck here, they have just a flat, it has to be under a hundred for a hotel and under sixty for meals. The nice thing about the GSA rates is that they're actually targeted towards where you're traveling to. So if you're traveling by Hamilton, New York, which happens to be the geographic center of New York State, you can pay eighty dollars a night to stay in a hotel there. But if you're traveling to Saratoga Springs, which I saw somebody was traveling to, you know, in peak season, you can spend, you know, like two hundred dollars a night there. Um, and those are from the same hotel. Right, actually they, you know, I mean, so anyway, so, but, but so my point is that there's, there's some, you know, thought that goes into, you know, where you're traveling to and how much do you need to spend according to where you're traveling to. I mean, you know, first of all, this is extremely thorough. Um, and I was not expecting or asking to get this level of detail and analysis. So I appreciate the time that everybody put into this, obviously. Um, you know, I, I don't necessarily know that it needs to be something that we as a board commlegate. I, I was just simply trying to get a read on what our, our policy was for the town.
Oh, sorry, but we didn't have one, so it needed to be, it's a little stuff together.
Well, um, because, because, you know, because frankly, we, we were called on to approve these things. And so, you know, with that in mind, I just wanted to make sure I understood what it was that we were approving. You know, I mean, the, the sort of three points that I had made to you previously, which I'll just refer to now, in terms of kind of what I think would need to be included in sort of a, you know, very loose policy because I don't, I agree with you that I don't think that we need the same sort of strict structure that you have at a state or federal level government position or entity. Um, but you know, I think to contain costs, things like pegging the lodging and the meals to the GSA rates, which you can go into the website, type in the zip code you're traveling to or the city you're traveling to and get those rates that are pegged to that city. Um, which then, you know, is the rates that you'll see when you then go online to search for a hotel in Hamilton, New York using the government rate, you'll say boom, oh, it's eighty-one dollars. That happens to be exactly what the GSA rate is and that's the reason why.
Do they have food or class food?
And so they also have food, so it's both lodging and meals. Um, you know, the second thing is, you know, just a simple note for, for people when they're sort of, you know, putting forth their, their travel proposal, just to say the ways in which they've attempted to reduce costs. Um, so you know, I've looked for the government rates. I've, you know, um, done sort of, I've, if I'm going to a conference, are there scholarships available to, to folks who are at the conference? Are the meals included in the conference? So there's not additional meal costs that are associated with it? Just sort of a note that lets us know the ways in which they tried to sort of contain costs through the travel. And then the last thing which you touched on, and it sounds like you're already doing, but you know, I would, I would also put into policy, of course, is just to make sure that we're always using the hotel tax acceptable as to where traveling to be or where.
Because the bottom line is we're not reimbursing it. So it, it's funny how when people remember that, they're like, oh, I'm not getting reimbursed, I'll make sure I break down. Yeah, um, so uh, yeah, so what I'm thinking is, is that um, as the budgets for these are set in, well, we start preparing for them in August is when we have our staff start putting together the budgets for the year. That um, um, in a couple of months maybe what we'll do is I will come back to the board with um, some guidelines and perhaps a form might be the easiest way for us to do it. And just, you know, whatever the GSA rate is, what the rate is, and just make it nice and simple so people can follow it. Just, you know, your location, wherever it is. Because I have to tell you, there's only going to be two or three of these conferences that it even applies for because ninety-nine percent of them are in-state, all the meals are included, they're, you know, you know, within three hours drive, um, and it's not an issue.
But I mean, I just, I also, I want to make clear if I, you know, because you and I have had this conversation, but for everyone else, that, you know, my goal is not to, not to try to restrict performance about the opportunities, not to say that training is not a good thing, not to imply that the budget that we have set is too high in any way for these opportunities for people. It's simply to give us guidelines on a case-by-case basis so that when things come in front of us, we have sort of clarity around what it is that we're approving.
Right, and, and what I, the only thing I want to avoid is, I want to avoid the knee-jerk, well, it, it, you know, I hit all the boxes, so therefore I travel. When in fact, you know, at budget time, I'd like the board to ask people, well, what is the training? How is it, you know, that sounds great, how is it relevant to what we're doing as a health person?
Normally when we were in the fire department and we were going to pay for travel, um, what we ended up doing is on their return, they had to, they had to explain upfront why this is something that would be good for the district and then they have to do a brief summary of what they took away from it. And then how it impacted the town. Just a short memo for the record so that I went to this because I needed to learn about X, Y, Z. Yeah, X, Y, Z. This is where we are, this is something new and came back, I learned this and I now plan on training three more people.
It's actually an interesting idea because just for the future, when people, you know, year after year, people go to the trainings, like, oh, this was a terrific one, we ought to invite more people to it, or this one was a little disappointing, not so sure it's worth sending more people to it unless they revamp it, sort of thing. Happy to do that. So we will take care of pulling that in. Um, and the other thing is, is it's a little bit out of order, but I thought maybe I would piggyback it onto it. We normally don't pay for people to go to training while they're still on probation. We wait until they're permanent employees. And I actually had a request for the board to sort of um, bend that sort of practice. Um, there's an authorization for both Bob Cialli and Terry Rowe to attend a seminar on construction inspection, which they're in the midst of doing quite a bit of downtown. And I think it would be tremendously helpful, especially for Terry to attend. Um, he's still on probation, but he's certainly.
He's the one that's the new guy that knows the GIS max?
Yep. Well, we have, so there's an assistant plan of this talent and then there's Terry who's been doing the pad and working with Bob Cialli.
I'm thinking the fact there's an immediate need for it.
Yeah, so I was here, I was hoping, it's um, I think it's five hundred and something dollars for the two of them to go. It's in Tarrytown.
It's like a worthwhile expenditure.
Okay, great. But again, we don't normally, you know, pay for people to go to training unless, yeah.
And I assume based on that that the intention is to make him become a member.
He, he, right, yeah, we certainly, yeah.
Julia, you're over there, do you want to get the American Motor Works as well, that request for Bart?
Oh, yeah, um, so, and where is that this year?
That is in Tarry.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that is another one of those that is usually in.
I'm sorry, Saratoga.
Saratoga, Saratoga, okay. Last year, I believe it was in Os-, it was in Massachusetts somewhere when Bart went to it. I just remembered him saying it relatively close, actually closer than some of the New York ones, but um. It doesn't matter, anyway.
The memo's on P. 44, it's back if you guys want.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, I mean, they do, yeah, Worcester, Massachusetts, the Hampton Inn.
Worcester.
Worcester, sorry. My Long Island accent.
One word I know how to pronounce, I'm just a few of those.
My Long Island accent is a shame, sorry. Um, yeah, but they, he attends that every year, either he or, I don't think Jerry goes anymore, but Bart certainly does to bring him up to speed. Okay. Um, and so it's been the board's practice that even though these conferences are approved in the, as a budget line, that we always bring them back individually to the board for individual approvals. Okay. All right, so we would put that, both of those on for approval next time, okay?
Okay, good.
All right, okay. Um, I missed it, but evidently we're having a continuation of a discussion online.
Well, technically it's, it's the beginning of a discussion because it wasn't, wasn't taped.
Well, it was taped, just no sound.
No sound. Anyone who started off?
Yeah, so I'm going to start in part, large part where I started, or at least discussed some of the things I discussed last week. And the first thing to kick this off, I want to address the letter that you sent Rob to Sumit and Buckwald and Senator Murphy. And just cite some of the things which I think are critically important in the letter.
Well, we all, we all technically sent it, I just signed it.
He says in substance, and in fact, references these evidently a shooting as we discussed from twenty-two years ago, twelve years ago and obviously most recently, what happened when, outside of the little store. More can be done, more must be done, discussing certain legislation that surrender of shotguns and rifles involving domestic violence cases, statistics are referenced and, you know, a mandate to enact these laws. In other words, it's critically important to support these, this legislation. We urge you to support these bills, we urge you to actively support the governor's proposals and do all that you can to protect the residents. So this was on February 16th. And this was sent to Sumit and Buckwald and Senator Murphy. And this is worth this. And the reason why we say that, we know that.
It's everybody's letter, just to be like, you know.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying letters in general, but certainly this is worth garbage. Because just this past week, and again, pardon some of my reading, uh, in reference to what was passed by the New York State Senate, uh, the bills passed instead focus on classifying school shooters as terrorists, requiring more active shooter drills at school and putting scanners to detect guns. Other legislation would provide more money for mental health experts at schools, stiffen penalties for bomb threats and make it easier for retired law enforcement officers to serve as school guards. I mean, some of this may have value, make no mistake, but that's the value of the letter that went to Senator Murphy.
Well, I don't think that, I, I don't think anybody expected that letter to have uh.
But let me, let me just continue. So that's the value of that letter. That same letter was sent to Sumit and Buckwald, who in fact has sponsored legislation and bills that were saying support this when he's already supported it and actually forwarded the legislation. And some of that legislation that is actually actively coming up, some of the measures would keep firearms out of the hands of people deemed by courts to be a danger to themselves or others set a ten-day waiting period for delivery of a gun to a person who hasn't cleared a background check as opposed to the three-day period. And these are also married to those in the, in the State Senate by the Democrats. And prevent people convicted of domestic violence from buying a firearm. Uh, also references a bill involving bump stocks, which would accelerate rounds being fired from semi-automatic rifles. Um, require out-of-state residents who also have homes in New York to waive the confidentiality of their home state's mental illness records if they want to own a gun in New York State. And for those who don't know, if you actually are domiciled and residence are different things, if you're here in New York but from out of state and you don't, because residence, pardon me, there's, there's records there from out of state, you would actively, actively have to waive those to allow the state of New York to review those before approving your license. So there's a real loophole in that. So our letter, again, it's simply, it, it doesn't do anything. Um, I went through some of the legislation that I referenced last week and I won't go through it all because we all can read, but there's a few that I thought that we have to get behind. And when I say we have to get behind, to say that it's politics, the reality of the situation is it is politics because while I'm sure there's people on each side of different views and can agree to disagree, maybe meet somewhere in the middle. Senator Murphy, and I think this is of critical importance, and I spread this last week, said back in 2016, "I don't want to be the one to tell a lady who has been victimized over and over again that she can't have anything to fend off that husband or boyfriend who's come in to beat her up numerous times. If that's the only choice that the fence she has, I want her to have it. I support the Constitution, I support the Second Amendment, I will never kick that away." First of all, I don't think anyone here says they don't support the Second Amendment, who are the Constitution? But again, I referenced that letter and what is the cause for change or to make change happen if we are going to have open arms, acquiesce, not make a stink, not fight, not get angry, not get upset, and have business as usual? Because saying this is one thing, but doing something is different, right? I don't think anyone would disagree. And if you, in this case, our senator happens to be Senator Murphy, it's not Senator Flanagan, it's not, uh, for that matter, a congressman in Western New York on the concealed carry permit, we can only change what we can change. But if, if this law and smart firearm legislation, is that important to you, Rob? Is that important to you, Lisa, Ivy, Hala, me? Then there needs to be something more than a letter to say, Senator Murphy, you may be one senator, but if you really care about your constituents in Newcastle who overwhelmingly want to see change, I appreciate you giving me dollars for a basketball court. I appreciate, make no mistake, EpiPen legislation. I appreciate what you're doing for distracted driving. These are all important things. No one's disputing otherwise. And relatively speaking, those are easy lifts, relatively speaking. But this has to be something that we say, don't say this and come to us and expect open arms if your actions reject it. Don't say to us and don't say to your constituents and we happen to have the ability as legislators, albeit local ones, to have this forum where people can be bored and watch us or watch us later on, laugh at us, adore us, turn the channel, whatever it may be, but at least we have that opportunity to be, be recorded and say, if you really care about victims of domestic violence, if you really care about kids, then why would you not support Senate Bill 7133, which is the establishment of extreme risk protection orders? Which requires probable cause, not just on a whim, for temporary seizing of a weapon, firearm, and to be given back ultimately. Um, why would you not want to extend, extend a three-day background check to a ten-day background check? What, what, you're not stripping someone of that right to have a firearm. Let's Senate Bill 5808-A. Um, there's a couple other ones, the bump stock 6902 and the one I just referenced before, 7605, which is closing out that loophole for mental health records. I really, you know, I don't want to bore everybody and I, I had the intention of going through a lot of this, but the statistics and the basis and the justification for some of this legislation is frightening. Um, just for example, in case you aren't aware, currently, before firearms license is issued, an investigation must be made of the applicant's history of mental illness. Um, what it allows us to do, and I say us, the state, is to get records within the state. There was a recent decision in 2013 that gives us an issue and that relates to where someone is domiciled in a foreign state. I don't understand why, in a letter, again, it needs to be more than a letter, Rob.
I agree.
And Lisa and Ivy.
Well, don't, yeah, don't say Lisa, that's not fair.
And, and I just was singing everybody.
I, I thought you were going to stop with Lisa. And you didn't mention Hala.
And Hala. And Jeremy.
I agree a hundred percent.
And, and, almost done, almost done. And it need, a letter isn't going to do it. So last week, unfortunately, there was a lot of defensiveness. This wasn't an attack on, on Lisa, this was an attack on you. This was, this was, this was anger and frustration that I think all of us should be equally angry and frustrated. Each of us either has a nephew, a niece, a cousin, you know, a child that we love dearly. And your heart explodes, I'm walking my, my fifth grade, my five-year-old to elementary school is asking me questions about, who the heck knows, but I'm saying yes, you know, grass is green and concrete's gray for whatever reason. They said, you know, just being kids, asking silly, doing it, they have no idea what's going on in the world. And to think that no matter who's out there who wants to do harm, having an officer stationed, well, it may be helpful. We see what happened unfortunately in Parkland. Having metal detector, having better drills, yes, that will potentially help the backside of it. But what's going to stop the beginning? What's going to stop it from getting in someone's hands? And to me, this has to be one of the most central issues, whether it's in the state, whether it's in the federal government. And again, when we look at it locally, you can call it politics, but David Buckwald has co-sponsored this legislation. It is dying vigorously, I guess, and literally in the State Senate. They are not listening because we are not giving them a message of dire straits that if they do not adhere to our warning as a, as a constituent, but also as a local legislator in their district, there will be a consequence. And when we discuss the two-hundred thousand dollars, even the discussion of the two-hundred thousand dollars, whether or not anything ever comes of it, is certainly a lot more important. If I said to you, Rob, Lisa, Ivy, Hala, let's just use examples here specifically. To me, one of my babies has been, for lack of a better term, this playground. Uh, Lisa, the Wallace, basketball court among other things. If someone said to me, you know what, if you can make enough stink, galvanize people, get it out there, that you might have to wait. I don't think anyone here would say, you know what, if I have to wait, I don't get it today, I get it tomorrow, I get it from someone else. But I can make it clear that I am not on the take, and I'm not saying you're on the take, don't misconstrue, that your money is not buying my loyalty, I have the courage to speak out against you in a constructive but assertive angry way, constructive. Then, then it needs to happen, it's more important. All of us would say, forget about it, all of us would deal without power for the next two weeks that we knew we can affect change. Again, that's, one has nothing to do with the other. But writing letters is, it's garbage. They're not listening to us. So I asked you, I'm sorry, I'm done now, I, I asked you, what do you propose? Instead of saying this is politics, instead of saying this is a campaign, because in our community, again, the issue is not these other, it's not needle low. We do have a firearm reciprocity, concealed carry reciprocity act issue, which needle low will in support, I'm sure. What do you propose concrete that we can do? And going to Albany is nice, but unless these kids, and we discussed this very briefly, are going to confront, whether it's David Buckwald or what he thinks about, and Senator Murphy, what he thinks about on these bills and get real answers, I don't want to photo op. Yes, it's nice to have them in the process. These kids in Florida, these kids from Columbine since have more courage than I can ever fathom.
Definitely.
So, so how do we, and I ask this, what is your view of leadership as a supervisor here in this community to say, we need to take these affirmative steps, we're not going to make any apologies, we demand answers and actions that will protect everybody, period, not asterisk?
Okay, Lisa, let me just answer his question.
Okay.
You asked me about leadership and I'd like to, you see, leadership to me, everybody has different definitions of leadership. To me, leadership is actually doing things. To me, leadership is, is trying to get things done, I don't mean to do a campaign slogan, but I, I like to get things done and I want to be, I didn't take this job to just, because I like the title, I don't like the title. I like, I want to affect.
See, I gotta say why you don't like the title, I gotta say why you don't like the title.
I want, I want, I don't like the title. It was the first thing I said four years ago and it's elected, can we change it? On election night, as a matter of fact. Um, the fact is, is that I would tell you what, what, what I'm doing and we have to, I, listen, I think you are well-intentioned and I don't agree with giving back the money. I don't want to spend a lot of time with that, I really don't, I want to get the work.
But I'm moving, I'm talking about leader, I'm not talking about, I, I'm not saying you have to give back the money. That's not what I'm saying, just to tell me, tell me what we're going to do.
I'm okay with it, I want, I want to do. So what I did, so these are some of the things that I've done, okay, so far. And by the way, we've all done stuff and I want to continue to do it. Ivy has come forth with a terrific list, a huge list of things that we could do on the local level. I don't know how many pages this is, but it's, it's a lot. And we're going to talk about this. I'd like to talk about this every single week, have another one of these on the agenda. Okay, we started with the storage, turns out it's probably preempted. Okay, we'll start another one. Uh, so that was great, thank you. Lisa's meeting with the Chapel Central School District, there's no messing up, I mean, the, the power failure and everything, so she's meeting with them on Friday. Let me just go through my list. Yes, I drafted the first letter that everybody approved, Ivy had some good input, we added, we added that to it and we sent it out. Nobody expected that letter to solve any problems, okay? I asked you last week, I said, you have a lot of stuff there, put together a letter and then we can review it. I actually took the liberty of doing that. Max. Max, my intern, helped me with it, and I appreciate that, Max. Because the whole thing is that, here is something that happened in Tallahassee, Florida. The senate passed a whole bunch of sweeping gun reform bills. It's because of those students in Florida. So, you may not think that, you know, going to Albany with a bunch of students is effective, but honestly, I'm just basing on what's happened in Florida. It has been effective. Killing a bunch of first graders, shockingly, wasn't enough. I mean, I could have bet anything that we were gonna get change after that, and I would have lost a lot of money. But apparently, having a mayor shooting at a school with highly motivated kids is actually, you know, it could result in some positive change. So I think we follow their lead. I think we take our highly motivated kids from Greeley, and make no mistake, it has a lot who are interested in going already, and we go there with Max, and Max can tell you, Max, do you think there'd be kids interested in going down to Albany?
I can personally say I can name 50 kids right now.
My friends have probably at least 100 already. I mean, honestly, we're gonna have to rent, get tons of bus, and it's gonna be a field trip for the school. Christine Ackerman loves it. Okay, we're also gonna go to Albany with Christine Ackerman as a town board or a town supervisor, and as a superintendent of schools. These are concrete steps. Now, the letter I wrote, and I'll just, I'll take the time to read it, because I think you'll actually, we agree on these issues, by the way. We agree a hundred percent on these issues, okay? I'm not interested, I'm not defending Senator Murphy. I couldn't agree with him more on gun control, okay? Couldn't, I mean, disagree with him.
Strike that, strike that!
Disagree with him more. They're gonna take that out, that's it. I could not disagree with him more on gun control, and I will make it crystal clear to him. And this is an issue that's, like you, really gets me mad. It is ridiculous, but it's not just Senator Murphy. I can be outrageous, Senator Murphy, and I can tell him how I feel, but he is not gonna solve this problem. It is the whole New York State senate. The fact that they don't let these issues be debated on the floor is ridiculous. And it's not Senator Murphy's gonna change it. We could send a message to him, okay, that's fine. You could do everything in your personal power to get him out of office come November. Everybody can, but I don't believe that's our role as a town board. I believe our role as a town board is to focus on the issues. So let me read the letter that I wrote, and thank you, Max, for helping me write this.
Is this to Murphy?
This is to Murphy.
Only, or?
Only, but what I wanted, what I'm suggesting, is that we CC it to every single Republican senator. And I have a list of Republican senators that I think I failed to print out. It was a bit of a pain to get it, but, only because you copied it from the website, I have to delete all the Democrats. But whatever, I have a list of every single Republican senator that we should send it to. I also want to send this to the Westchester Partner Association of Supervisors, as was Westchester's municipal list, and we could send it to the press. I understand, I understand making statements, but I don't personally like making statements at the expense of our recreational facilities, but I don't want to spend too much time on the $200,000. I understand making statements, I understand the value of that. I just don't want it to come at the, I don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face, but here's a letter. Dear Senator Murphy, Effective gun controls measure directed at reducing tragedies, stopping them before, stopping them before they occur. The acts of senseless violence we witness again and again must be dealt with through prevention. Your support of S-7813 is not enough. Essentially, that proposal, after-the-fact measure, that characterized certain gun offenses as terrorism. While the measure does speak of coordinated role for government, it does not stop gun violence before it happens. The town of Newcastle Town Board sees no benefit in playing politics with gun control. Our position is clear. We wrote you on February 16th, supporting Governor Cuomo's proposals that all who are convicted of domestic violence charges, including misdemeanors, cannot possess a firearm. He also proposed legislation mandating the surrender of shotguns and rifles when order protection is issued in a domestic violence case. Our support to strengthen the 2013 SAFE Act is based upon a reasoned view that by keeping guns out of the hands of dangerous people and reducing the opportunities for gun owners to make dangerous and deadly modifications to legal weapons, our residents are safer. We urged you last month to support these bills. We urge you again to change your position. Bills such as S-7133A, UPO, must move forward for a vote in the senate. We vigorously oppose your position to repeal the New York State Secure Ammunition and Firearms Enforcement SAFE Act of 2013. We support the following: a ban on bump stocks. Now, if you would, if you would, you know, take part in drafting this letter, you could add in all the bills. I think you wrote, you said it was 66902. We support the following: a ban on bump stocks, raising the age to the purchase of rifles from 18 to 21, ban assault-style weapons, ban in bump, alright, I said that. Max, that was your edit, sorry, I forgot to read it. That was one of your many edits. Stronger background checks. I might have printed in old copybacks. Registered weapons every five years, database of all gun owners, registered all gun dealers. Extreme risk protection orders, neighbor's courts temporarily prohibit person from having guns if the law enforcement or family members demonstrate that the individual possesses significant threat to themselves and others. A state database of mentally ill people to prevent them from buying guns. And Max, as you pointed out, we gotta be careful not to stigmatize mentally ill, but that's very, very important. Increased funding for mental health services for children and their families. Expanding gun buyback programs. I've already spoken to the chief about organizing a gun buyback program, which he's in favor of. Not just for us, but for Westchester County. Ban individuals convicted of hate crimes from purchasing or possessing guns. Conducting research on gun violence. We made some progress in New York, we cannot go backwards. That's pretty much it. Other things that I'm talking about, yes, we're talking about a roundtable discussion, but it's not a political thing aimed at one senator. It's aimed at everything that we can do as a community. Legislation, we can talk about legislation. We can talk about making our schools safer. We can talk about how you can effectuate change with a vote. Yes, that's something we could talk about. We could talk about identifying at-risk kids, the warning signs. We could talk about, in Florida, one of the things that they passed recently was a notification system that kids can, you know, submit tips if they think some kid, you know, might lose it. School security, provide law enforcement with more tools to stop violence before it happens, educate the public ahead of recognize of red flags, and provide tips to law enforcement. These are all things that we can talk about in a roundtable discussion. I'm suggesting organizing supervisors for gun safety. A coalition similar to the states for gun safety that in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut used to, recently started. And the gun buyback program. So, the fact is, so what's, maybe?
Just out of curiosity, we sent a letter on February 16th. Did we receive a written response from Senator Murphy?
No, we haven't received a response from anybody. Listen, I think we all agree.
And I guess too, I guess my other question would be, it's one thing to write a letter of which, you know, he may or may not read it, or staff may read it, or it may go into the pile, or whatever ends up happening. It's not the same thing, since there is an existing relationship, to actually go and sit and meet with him and tell him why you feel this is so important. And I feel that there's a letter writing is kind of like symbolic.
That's what lobbying is. Lobbying is you go and you appointments with senators.
I'm talking about as, two of you as representatives, whether it's you and Jeremy, or Lisa and Jeremy.
I think it's us, but also the kids.
I agree, but I think that, I think that, you know, a conversation rather than a symbolic letter writing, but a one-on-one conversation.
That's lobbying, that's lobbying.
Am I allowed to say something?
Well, no, that's not wrong.
I would just, I would just like to say something. I really feel to characterize this suggestion as lobbying when it is actually the conviction of the board, and if we all agree that the measures going forward are important, it's actually communication and not lobbying.
It's called, Hala, when you go down to in support of legislation or against legislation, it's called lobbying. It's not my word, it's done every single day.
I'm afraid in this particular instance, it's called leadership. Because what you want to make sure is that Senator Murphy understands the viewpoints of this entire board and of the community behind them. And sending a letter is not the same thing as actually having to defend or have a more difficult conversation.
I think we have to do it all.
I agree.
Well, why don't you talk, why don't you talk?
It's happened to be a very good letter, I think.
Why don't you talk about some of the things you've done as leadership, and also let me ask you this, Hala. Are you willing to give back the $500,000 grant for Millwood Sidewalks? In the name of leadership? Because, don't forget who got us that grant.
I don't know why you were bringing this up, since it has nothing to do with what I was talking about.
What are you talking about? We're talking about Senator, we're talking about giving back money for grants that Senator Murphy got us.
Excuse me, that is not what I was saying.
I'm asking you a question. Are you willing to give back $500,000?
I think this is out of left field and makes no sense.
It's not out of left field. Jeremy has suggested giving back $200,000.
Jeremy has. That is not what I was suggesting.
I'm asking you a question though. I'm not saying you are. I'm asking you a question.
It is, it is a deflective technique from the ultimate substance of what I was saying.
I'm asking you if you're willing to send that statement like Jeremy is. It's $200,000.
Let me ask you, Paul.
We haven't had that discussion. I'm talking about trying to understand that the local state senator for our district, who sits at the polar opposite side of where the vast majority of residents in our town sit, that we can write letters, letters can say, I've done it. I'm suggesting that we go and talk to him face-to-face.
Yes, that's called lobbying.
I think we should. I think we should go further than that and speak to him, but also, he alone is not gonna make a difference.
But if he himself, as a Republican, moves.
I agree, but I think we need to talk to him, and I also think we need to galvanize larger forces to go and talk to all of the Republican lawmakers and Democrats, if there are any against some of these, like to everybody, and really.
And, and we try to, and I feel like we should also identify that if there are any sort of moderate Republicans that support common sense legislation,
Right, 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 exactly.
we should support them.
Let me just say this real quick. When you go to lobby, I'm just gonna say this one thing. When you go to lobby, they have, I take part in lobby days every single year in New York State trial lawyers. When you go to lobby days, the way it works, and I'm sure you guys know this, the way it works is you identify all the senators you want to meet with. So let's say it's 40 different Republican senators. And then if you have 500 people taking part, you divide into groups of 20, and you send them all to these different people. That's how you do it. So you do sit down at face-to-face meetings, but you don't have 200 people jam into one person's office. You divide them into groups, and then you hit everybody. And if they ever allow the debate to take place on the senate floor, then you all show up there, and you have a press conference outside, and that's how you make a statement. But it's not one senator, it's every single senator.
If I may, if I may just finish, if I may finish, I apologize, thank you. So, I, listen, Rob, I appreciate you taking the time to put that together, and there is no doubt in my mind that because of what happened last week, this wasn't coming but for that.
Well, that's not, that's not true, actually.
That's not true.
If not for,
Actually, last week I recommended all these things.
If not for, if not for, if not for, we use the term stink and back and forth that we had, you were not coming here. Really, Lisa? You was coming here or not?
Oh, no. This letter, this letter was a hundred percent prepared.
So, the point being, we finish, so.
This letter, you're right, was prepared because of that. Not the other stuff I mentioned last week.
So, so, the point is, even the fact that this galvanized, you, I use the term many times, to another thing, and that letter certainly is a much better letter than the letter we have from before, because it points to specific legislation. But, you know, what I think's important is a few things that you said which I completely disagree with. And one of those is, it's one senator. We all know the makeup, even with the IDC, you know the makeup. I mean, you're literally talking one or two people swings it either way. And you have to start somewhere. And to think, again, that I'm going to convince an Erie County, and making up, I don't know who's in Erie County, but it's Chamon County senator to do something when I'm not his constituent, is almost as likely as me convincing a Wyoming congressman, congressman from Wyoming to do something.
But the Florida kids did.
But, hold on, but let me just finish, finish that. So, you gotta start somewhere, and there needs to be a consequence, because if I write this letter, and I say, this is my letter, this is important, you don't cross this line, and he does nothing about it, then I go, okay, well, don't cross it.
What's the consequence? Giving back $200,000?
So, I, the point of that conversation is, think of something that you can do to make it known that we're not going to keep our arms wide open for you. Because this is, because God forbid this happens, God forbid. No one's gonna say, great, you know, you didn't do anything with $200,000, you didn't not invite him to the event. We're gonna be, what could we have done more? What could we have done more? So, so there needs to be, again, I'm saying, Rob, listen to what I'm telling you. I'm saying to you, you need to be creative, you, I mean, all of us. You need to be creative to think of a consequence. And I'm not opposed, don't misconstrue what I'm saying about going to Albany. It's great if there's 50 or 100 kids go to Albany. What I don't want to see is photo op rate, that's go meet with Senator Murphy and David Buckwald, someone Buckwald. There needs to be a forum for each, for a real conversation for him, because again, it's not David, to answer why, I don't want to point anyone out specifically, or let's say, why a student who's there from Horace Greeley High School, his or her security and safety is not important enough to Senator Murphy, that A, B, and C legislation, we can go through, what the address for is not there. And here's the bill, so it's more than just going up there. I think there needs to be a consequence, there needs to be real affirmative, call it lobbying, call it whatever you want, conversation. It needs to be more than a letter, and it can start with one person.
But when you go up to Albany, when you go up to Albany, you go up when you do, when you go to lobby. I know, when you go to lobby, so as you know, as you know, when you lobby, you get, you have legislation you're lobbying for. You're not just lobbying and saying hi and talking generally. You're lobbying for specific legislation.
We're talking to our senator. This is, he is our representative. Just like someone might talk to me at the train station about, about a pothole. I mean, it's like, you have access, you want, this is, needs to be a forum for that, but a really big pothole. So, whatever we're going to do, it's not about $200,000. It's about getting people to react and respond and think of something in a way to make a difference, because we're not making a difference otherwise.
So, let me ask my question, this is what I was initially gonna ask you. So, I think this letter is excellent.
I think it's a lot better.
I think we've already galvanized, and I'm meeting with Christine on Friday, we had a meeting scheduled for quite a while ago, and it got canceled. We're galvanizing students because they do make a big difference, we're seeing now, to go up, so what are your ideas? What are your specific ideas? Because you're saying, we need to do this, we need to do this. Do you have any other ideas?
I'm, I'm open to any, I'm open to just about anything, really, anything. I don't, and do I have a list of ideas and plans? No, you know what? I like to think I'm smart enough, but I'm smart enough to know that I'm not. And I need that help for someone to say, this is a good idea, this is a good idea. Consider this. It's all hands on deck. So, writing a letter, again, and I think we're all in agreement, is not gonna do anything.
No, but it's something to do in combination with other things.
And just having a photo op of, having a photo op is not an answer. Having active.
Always talk about a photo op, I don't know what that means.
No, I don't know.
Having active.
But I can understand why you'd be concerned about that. That's not the root, the reason.
Right, right, so having an active, so have an active engagement is the answer, and I don't, and I want, I wanted to sway you of the belief, Rob, that he's only one. Because that's the same comment someone from Greene County can make, that's the same comment from, I used Chamon County before, and Washington. Yes, they're only one, but there's only, so, every one is one. And all of them together make a difference.
That's why we need to talk to everybody.
And, but, we need to work what we can work. We need to work what we can work.
But I think that, I do think that our own representative needs to take our concern at a much more serious level, and we're not, for us, not to have a face.
That's why we have to start, but I think, I think to stop there is, is even.
We're not, but we're gonna start it yet.
Nobody's advocating that. We haven't gotten a response to our letter. We know we have.
Oh, please.
I'm not saying.
This wouldn't have been a response to the letter, they passed legislation.
I know. It was, it was an FU response, so.
Yeah, well, Hala, what do you suggest? Give us your suggestions.
Are you asking me in a kind and productive way, or are you asking me in a belligerent, let's start a fight way?
Hala, give me your suggestions.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I was reacting to your tone.
Hala, give me.
But that's, that's, that's not, that's not.
For the benefit of everybody in this, everybody in this.
It's a work session, let's keep, put all ideas on the table, that's what I think.
Alright, Ivy came forward with this incredible list of local stuff. Lisa's meeting with, with the, with the school district. Okay, Jeremy has a suggestion. I don't agree with it, but that was his suggestion. I want to hear your suggestions.
And let me just say, for forgiveness.
I have, what I. We've got lots of people working on this. My feeling is, is that we have not worked Murphy over enough.
So you don't have a suggestion? What's your suggestion? I'm asking you for suggestions.
But that's fair, but that's fair. Rob, that's fair, I'm, it's fair. We know what we want to get to, how we get there is why it's all hands on deck.
I do think that we should be open. We have not actually worked him over as our representative. And I think it's important, because I think he needs to know, way before we march with a whole lot of kids up to Albany, exactly where he stands, and we want him to understand where we stand as a community.
But doesn't this letter, doesn't this letter do that? And by the way, the only reason I did this letter, you're a hundred percent right, that I did this letter in response to you last week.
And we have.
And the reason I did, and the reason I did it, and the reason I did it is because.
I appreciate that, and it shows that we can, even if we fight, we can still get a, forward.
No, the reason I, the reason I did it is because I said to you last week that I think it would be more productive if you put down your thoughts in the form of a letter that we can all then work on, name specific legislation that either he voted, you know, against it that we support, or this legislation that we want him to support. I only, if you came forward with a letter today, this letter would never have seen the light of day. I'm bringing this letter right now, just because, because I think it's a good starting point.
I I agree, I agree.
And I, and we should add to specifics to it, add to legislation, if you have more legislation I left out, add it, but this letter needs to be specific, it needs to name every single bill that we disagree with this vote on, and the bill that we support.
But you need to, but next step is, but what, if then what?
So can I, can I just say one thing?
And then it goes to every single Westchester, uh, listen, I'm just one more thing, then this letter goes to every single supervisor in Westchester and Putnam County, you can go to the Westchester municipal officials, they can go to the press, that's how you can get other people, it's not just Murphy, we guess Murphy,
We gotta get it.
but we gotta get every other senator, we need, we need, and it's not just our high school kids, we need other high school kids to come, it it with their centers. Everybody needs to follow the lead of these Florida kids up in Oneonta, up in Rochester, we all have to follow the lead, and that's how we're gonna do it. We, if, listen, if we go meet to, when I lobby with the trial lawyers, and if I go meet somebody in in Rochester, which I do, I mean, you meet everybody, they may not listen to what we care, but we have high standards.
I can't, okay, no, no, it's my turn.
Come on, come on, go ahead.
So, um, just because it's a work session, and I think, you know, you're bringing up a good point that we have to find more, what can we do to kinda say you must listen to us? And and I know you did bring up the money for the basketball court, so I just wanted to address my thought on that, is that I I hundred percent agree that we need some kind of bite, and I can't tell you what that is right now, but I don't know that the money that came, actually not from Murphy, it came from the Dormitory Authority, whose goal is to provide infrastructure um, throughout New York State. I don't know that rejecting that money is gonna make a bit of difference to Murphy, I really don't, I don't think he cares.
I don't think it will, I I don't think he will.
I think he may have helped us to procure it, but I don't think that will sway him one iota, and if we say we don't want the money, frankly, I don't think he's gonna care, so to me, I would like to find another way to give him that bite while not basically taking our kids and we want them to play on this basketball court, frankly, instead of playing video games where they're all shooting each other, and I I would like to see that built and use that money for the good of our taxpayers, and find another way that's actually gonna make a difference to um, to get his attention, and and I do think it's a little bit of a slippery slope, because
The problem.
if we do say, well, we're gonna give back that money, then we gotta look at every money, every dollar that anyone's given us and see if we agree with everything that they're saying.
So the pro, so a couple of things to that, first of all, in terms of everything, to me personally, and we all can disagree or agree, I think what assumes firearms law in general and safety is really the paramount issue in my personal view, I mean, again, we can, some people can agree, disagree, there's probably a lot of different things people can say, healthcare, I mean, we could all have arguments, which has more merit, but to me, this is one of those issues that it's, there's no gray, it's black or white, you're either with it or you're not. And and let me give a little tweet to that, we can probably find meeting grounds on the legislation, so you can be different, so there may be some gray, but in terms of the principles behind it, it's black and white, and you're right, I don't think Terrence Murphy or any respective state legislator would care that much if we, for lack of a term, rejected money, but it also shows that that, don't think that because you give us money, our arms are gonna be open and we will turn a blind eye. Don't think that if we do something that is hard, a decision that we make is difficult, that other communities in varying degrees may be willing to, we'll say buck, bucket, you know, buck the system, not not, but that's the B, according. Um, to to bucket and say, um, you know, if they have the courage to do X, we can have the courage to do Y, we can show, yes, we've supported you and 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 in this particular case, you know, this is calling you out on because you have a relationship with him, or, you know, I've had a relationship with you, Senator Murphy, but this is something that you don't pass go. This is something, so.
Oh, absolutely.
But they're not mutually exclusive, I I, they're not mutually exclusive.
So so, so whatever it is, whatever it is, we have to, we have not done it, and we have to figure out how to do it, and I have made no, I have no apologies for the suggestion that I made. And the fact that we're even here, we use the term arguing, but it's a lot more productive, arguing in a good way about it is 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 a sign. Local legislation, no, I don't wanna point at you because you can't, there's no disrespect to identity, but that's not gonna answer anything in terms of the big picture, the big picture starts federally, then is state, and then, but we have to start somewhere, and my view is
We gotta do everything.
that person, our particular district, is Murphy, and how do we, how do we exact change, how do we do it? And there needs to be consequences, there needs to be.
I agree, there needs to be consequences, and I think that sending a letter that goes onto a pile, that goes onto all the other letters that goes onto a pile, is kind of secondary to actually trying to have a conversation and letting him know there will be consequences, whether the consequences are, we'd like to understand why you feel this way, we'd like to understand your position, can we help you understand why this is a bad idea? Are you willing to change, document that, and if necessary, just come out and, you know, not, I don't wanna use the word condemn him, but condemn his point of view on those topics.
What does the letter send right now in terms of what we're asking Murphy to do besides supporting those bills?
Well, first of all, I agree with the, I agree a hundred percent there should be consequences, I just don't think the kid should be the one who suffered those consequences.
But whatever it may be, I mean, I'll, I'll.
But you know, and and by the way, I I don't mind your suggestion, and it it got, it it got some attention, and and maybe, you know, you you sent a message. I just don't wanna give away the money, because I wanna get this basketball court built for our kids, so I have no problem sending messages, but I do have a problem giving away two hundred thousand dollars that, at too expensive for kids.
I just wanna send an appropriate message that he's gonna actually care about, one that's gonna matter to his reelection, exactly, that's the only thing that matters.
I, but I'm, right, I'm okay with that, I'm okay to do everything and everything, I just don't wanna hurt our kids.
Even from his viewpoint, it's different.
So, so I agree with consequences, but I just think it's not hurting him, it's gonna hurt us, we could send messages and do other things that can hurt him. But Ivy, as far as this letter, this was a a very rough draft, and and pretty much what I really would like to do with this letter, and again, it was, it was just a starting point, what I'd like to do with this letter, is last week when you came, and you didn't go into it, you said this week, I'm not gonna go into it, you have a lot of stuff there, and you said, I'm not gonna go into it this week, but what I'd like you to do, as it, all of us as a town board, is go into it and and write down every single vote on gun control that he has, every vote on gun control that we do not agree with, with with our senator, and then we put that in a letter, and then I'd like to list every single piece of legislation that's pending, and put that in a letter, and with with the exact, with the with the bills, the number of the bills next to it, and then, even I listed all these things, registered weapons every five years, database of all gun owners, all those things, if there's no pending bills, then we could say, hey, you should sponsor a bill like this, and we could even come up, and this would take a little more work, we could even come up with bills, sample bills from other states, that they have these type of things, so that's, I would like this letter to be as specific as possible, and I would like this letter to then be the framework that we use when we go up to Albany to lobby every single Republican senator.
No, I I I, I think that, I I agree with that recommendation, I just think based on the conversation tonight, that in addition to listing out all of the bills that we want Murphy's support on, um, we might also include the ways in which we want him to respond, so you didn't respond to the last one, well, here's what we want you to do for us. We're coming up to lobby or advocate or have Albany Day or whatever it is that we wanna call it, um, and we expect you to meet with us, and we expect you to meet with our kids, and we expect you to answer to the questions that our kids have about why you have not supported the safe act in the past and what you intend to do on these bills. Second, we'd like you to come to a town hall in the town of Newcastle and speak with our residents who are deeply involved and concerned on this issue. Um, again, to be able to answer for the ways that you voted in the past, and to tell us, you know, how you intend to, you know, react to the current set of circumstances and the changes that have happened this year, um, so all I'm saying is that, you know, let's not end with we want your support, because, you know, to Hollis' point, I think that winds up in another pile of letters.
I agree a hundred percent, but again, it's gonna be the basis for the lobbying, with the high schools, I don't think we're gonna, Max, I don't think we're gonna be effective just going up there just ourselves.
Totally.
I think it's Max and his friends, I think it's my kids and their friends, it's your kids and their friends, and even your younger kids, it's the kids that are gonna make the difference.
Yeah, can I do something?
And asking the right questions.
Wait, first, first my intern, come on, Max has something to say, he raises his hand.
Very, 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 very. Alright, I'll, like, first understand this is coming from a seventeen year old's perspective, so if I say something kinda stupid. Um.
It's Max, we totally expect you to.
We won't be stupid, no, we won't be stupid, you won't be stupid, it's a good.
It's kinda stupid.
Uh, of course.
So I'm also from the perspective that I a hundred percent agree, like, if I had my way, I'd take a giant magnet and lift all the guns up from the world. But I think like the two, like giving back the two hundred thousand dollars is like, if if I thought it would work, I would say yes, but I think from his perspective, okay, thanks to the two hundred thousand dollars back, I'm not gonna, obviously not give you the money, and now, obviously, you're gonna, doing these things to spite me, I'm just not gonna listen to you anymore. And now, A, not gonna give you any more money, and B, say, okay, screw these guys, why, why should I listen to them?
Or why should I try to get them more money in the future, for sidewalks and clean water, and and other things that are important, and the fact is.
We shouldn't be beholden to dollars, because if it's not him, here's the response, if it's not him, if somebody else can get us those dollars who we agree with on a vast, or maybe whether we agree with them eighty-two, or her sixty-three, or him, ninety-two percent of the time, it'll be someone that we agree with more, who are, better for worse, will still access those dollars, whether it's pork, or whatever you wanna call it, to get us where we need to be. Um, so I disagree with that, because we should not be answering for dollars, so we don't want them, whether it's coming from the NRA or somebody else answering the dollars.
But Jeremy, the the, I'm not sure if you're dumb, Max, let me just say one quick thing.
Sorry. No, that was, that was my thing.
But all I'm gonna say, all I'm gonna say about that is, the thing is, Jeremy, I think, I think what I keep on saying is not mutually exclusive. I mean, listen, returning the money is sending a message, and 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 that, that could be fine if you just wanna send a message, I I don't, I could, I'm fine sending the message, I'm not fine returning the money. The point is, though, that it's not, they're not mutually exclusive, in other words, we could take the two hundred thousand, we could take the five hundred thousand for Millwood sidewalks, we could take money for clean water, we can take, we can take his help trying to get freaking more kind ed crews here, you know what I'm saying? And we could also send this letter, and we could also send it to the press, and we could also lobby every single Republican, they're not mutually exclusive. Just because we're taking two hundred thousand dollars as a grant, or five hundred thousand dollars for Millwood sidewalks, does not mean we're giving him a free pass.
Again, give him, what I may ask, to 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 circle and finish in part before, I think people wanna ask questions, but
It's a big assumption there.
what I, what I'm asking is, or saying, there needs to be a consequence, as I mentioned to Lisa, just when she asked me, all hands on deck, I don't have the answer, I have to think out of the box as best I can, because whatever we, when I say we, as a damn nation, not we as a town board, have been doing has been not enough, and obviously not working, and it's it's not gonna get better, so something has to happen, and, you know, you know, whether that means, again, because of your position and relationship, much more than I do, it is what it is, you know, much more so than Lisa does, it is what it is, and and Hala, if that means, listen, Senator Murphy, thank you, but I'm not gonna stand next to you for a photo op, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna not work with you, but I'm not going to push you along, and and let me, let me just say one other thing, and and I, one other thing is, usually twenty other things for an attorney.
What, one very long thing?
Yeah, one A, B, C, D, is, you know, there's a couple of other pieces to the dynamic, I I, in my unique position, having been a prosecutor, criminal defense attorney, you know, I see people, I deal with a lot, people coming into the airport or flying out of New York, coming in thinking they own a firearm, pardon me, possess a firearm, completely fine in the state of New York, they're from California, from Washington State, whatever it may be, they have no idea. And what has unfortunately, I think, helped the cause of the NRA, is when these people get arrested and charged with C violent felonies, if it's loaded, loaded being not necessarily in the chamber, but you could be loaded by law in the case with the firearm, and they go in, TSA said, I gotta check it, here's my hard sided case, and they're facing C violent felonies, now, Queens is very reasonable, but some other jurisdictions aren't, and I think even prosecutors have to look at and say, you know, not every person, certainly not every person who's exercising the right is a bad person, um, that there needs to be a means to do some more discretion. Um, and then the other thing I just wanted to add is, the reality for Senator Murphy is, why, it doesn't help him probably to support this legislation, because the red meat that his voting block wants is this, and I, you know, I sometimes mix views on it, because when I say mixed views on it, I look at my father when he supported marriage equality, and how the Democrats at the time were, you know, thank you very much, but now we see you as weak, and now's the opportunity to get rid of you. Because now you vote for something, so you're gonna lose the support of your Republicans who think you alienated them, and now the Democrats see you as weakened, and we're gonna vote for the Democrat who's running potentially, and now, no one's gonna like you, you're a man or a woman without a, without a home. So in his defense, I think some people have to say, as ugly as it might seem, if you want to have any real change, you're gonna have to reach across the aisle, and even if that means holding your nose, if it's a big enough and important enough issue, to say, I won't just turn my back on you, whomever you may be, if you do what is right, again, it's a judgment call as to how far and what you deem is right, but otherwise, he'll never change, they'll never change, they, whomever they may be, because it doesn't behoove them, in the end, they're not gonna get your support, and they're gonna lose the support of their base. So it's a real problem these guys and gals face in elected office, that's a bigger conversation for a bigger day, but these are just other active parts in the decision making process for any elected official.
But don't you, let me just say one quick thing, I'm sorry, but don't you think, if I'm, if I'm somebody who's, if I'm somebody who has a good relationship with him, and has worked, worked for the benefit of Newcastle, and at the moment I'm highly critical of him, and if I actually say it to him, which I have, I know you doubted me, but I actually have, I've spoken to him a number of times since Friday as well, uh, not, not because on this issue, but when it comes up, I talked to him about it, he just calls about the the power outage, but the fact is, is like, don't you think, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I would be effective, don't get me wrong, but as somebody who actually, you know, has worked with him, and if I say to him, listen, Terrence, you you you're making a mistake here, I understand, you got, you got the uh, the voter registration in your favor, but, you know, the tide is turning on this, you know, you get, you, these mainstreamers are crazy, I mean, exactly, I mean, I say things like, I say things.
I think your, I think your input would be a lot more valid than mine.
But that's the point, so by saying we take the two hundred thousand dollars, I mean, to Max's point, no, okay, okay, forget that.
Give a little back there, I'm I'm trying, when I'm going back, just saying, think of giving, you're trying to add a push.
Listen, okay, but I just don't wanna hurt the kids with the two hundred thousand, but the point is, I I think that, I think that me criticizing him, because the reason I'm saying the two hundred thousand, forget, we can forget about that, and I hope we do, but the reason I'm saying is that, because the point is, we can work together, and we can help, he can help us get money for the benefit of our community, and we can still be criti- critical of him, you know, at the League of Women Voters, I was very critical of Mike Caplids at that night, at at the debate, I said, Mike, I love you, but you know, this airport thing is a big problem, and and, you know, he was, he was upset by it. And I said, Mike, I do love you, I really do, and today we went down to kind ed today, today, and both advocated for Newcastle, and I still consider I have a good relationship with him. There are times you can be friendly with somebody and still be critical of them, and it's okay.
I I just, very briefly, to me, this issue seems to transcend a lot of the other issues, where we can disagree about the airport and disagree about this or about that. To me, this is not business as usual, I feel that this rises to a whole nother level. Now, it would be very hard for me to say to somebody like Terrence Murphy, you know, please come up to our side on guns and I could vote for you, because I couldn't because of his position on choice. So I, you know, I, unfortunately, I don't think that's in the cards for him, however, I do feel like as somebody.
But he knows that, I mean, there's an issue with the whole conversation, these guys and gals realize that.
Right. But I, but I feel like, because this issue to me feels like it is so much more important than anything else we've ever disagreed about, agreed about, focused on, you know, word knows we have a lot of history with each other, you know, this is, this, this transcends it all.
Think we are, yeah.
And in my mind, doing business as usual with him, in terms of, well, we still want him to help us with water, and with this, and with that, with the other, to me is a mistake, and it's a mistake because I feel like you are equating all these issues, and this to me feels different, so I'm, I may be alone in that feeling, but I wanted to put it out there, I think business as usual with Terrence Murphy has to stop, and we have to stop providing him with photo ops and his blood drive, and his this, and his that, all the things that make him look good, because I understand, we've disagreed about this all along, how much do you play with him so you can get good things, and, right, you know, that to me was a legitimate conversation and debate, I think, we've had over the years, not anymore. This is different, and at this point, as a town, we should be saying, you're not welcome here, because you are actively, actively putting forth positions that are beyond the pale for us, so we're no longer your buddy, we're no longer playing with you with this, no more blood drives, no more this, you're not welcome here because of this position that you are taking, I've done a ton of lobbying, I worked for Common Cause for years. I agree, you need to go see everybody, the other people aren't gonna matter, it's Murphy, because the other people could, don't care what the town of Newcastle has to say.
They may with the kids, go ahead, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I I, you know what, yes, maybe in terms of aggregate numbers of children in the state, but the place we can have the most impact is with our own people, and everybody, I worked for an assemblyman for years, you know, you you worry about your own more than anything else in the, in the senate and in the assembly. So I do think that there is, the message has to be sent to him, we're done with you. And 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 I do feel like we've got an election in eighteen, we're not talking about a long period of time, that we may not get the wonderful gifts that he bestows on us. You know, basically, we're talking about a couple of months, and then we're gonna have somebody else, hopefully, in place, who will vote with us, so I don't think that, I I, I don't see the risk in it.
But Jane, the prob, the problem with what you're advocating is basically, I I understand what you're saying as far as, if if we have somebody else coming in in Nov, in, you know, January first, that's fine, so there was only like, what, nine months, or whatever it is, ten months that we, nine months that we lost, basically, an advocate for us in Albany, I get that.
Takes that long to get anything anyway, right.
But, but the problem is also, I mean, I don't think it's our role as a, as a town board to basically try to get somebody voted out of office, I think it's our role as a town board to focus on the issues, and and still represent all of our constituents in every single area, and we may disagree with him like crazy on this issue, but we still may need his help for other things like power outages and things like that. And and like Jeremy said, it definitely could be a line in the sand when you show up to vote in November, and all of us may vote one way in December, but it doesn't necessarily mean that as a town board, we should be, you know, trying to affect, uh, effectuate the change in an election.
I I hear what you're saying, we've had this conversation, we disagree on it.
But as a town board, can't you, um, advocate for this one issue with him, and represent the town, because, you know, the town.
Yeah. Definitely.
Absolutely, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we do.
Right, well, I'm wondering about going sort of public, because I I kinda feel, Rob, and that's why I showed up today, that you're in a unique position as a Republican, who's.
I'm not a Republican, you know I'm not a Republican.
Okay, well, I'm the Republican ticket, sorry, but I mean-
Oh, that's a big, it's a big thing, honestly, it's a big thing.
I, I know you're not, and I-
Is, is there anything I said tonight that sounds like Republican, seriously, is there anything I said tonight that sounds like Republican?
Rob, look, can I just, I don't, I mean, I know you guys are used to like your, your banter together, but like I like-
Banter? Well, you just called me a-
I, I-
You called me Republican when you know I'm not, so it's not fair.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I know, I, I know from knowing you over these past years that you take positions that are varied and, and I think a lot of the positions that you take are blue positions and that's wonderful.
Well, because I'm a Democrat.
Okay, but, but I, but I think that I think if you just were to step forward and use your voice and your position to disagree with Terrence Murphy publicly, um, in front of all hi- just a minute, in front of all his voters, or at least threaten to do so. You know, i- in this letter, if, if there was some way and you guys could kind of figure out what the language would be, that like we, if we don't get a response from you, we, we kind of have to go forward. We have to step forward and we have to show our community, who we represent, that this is a deal breaker, this is a really important issue to our whole town, our parents are worried, our children are scared, they're all watching the news. You know, on this, Terrence, we have to part ways and I have to do it publicly, I have to stand up and let my town know and, and you're such a good communicator. You're, you're out there, I mean, we're right there.
No, you are, thank you.
You, you, you are, it's, it's one of-
You are a hustler and a half.
Oh, that's awesome.
It's, it's really, um,
I know, I'd be nice to you for a reason.
It sets you apart in, in a lot of ways from other town supervisors that we have.
Well, Paul Fider's a pretty good guy.
How you-
Oh, he is.
How you communicate to the, to the town. And that letter that you just read, that I just heard, like no one else is hearing, you know, and if-
What did you write to, to his letter?
Oh, you mean his father?
So I'm saying that if, if the town, if the residents of the town were to learn through your communication, you know, your letter to the community, that you're doing this, that you're waging this battle, that you're, you as a town board and you at the helm are leading this fight on this topic, not, not trying to unseat him, you know what I mean, that not being the goal, but Terrence, this is, this is where we part ways. So if you did that, um, and all the voters in the town of Newcastle saw that and maybe beyond, because I think there are, he does have a voting block, but I bet embedded in that voting block are people who agree on this topic
Who we talked about getting other municipalities to sign on that letter.
and are scared for their kids too, you know, and even, even gun owners,
More than, more than-
even gun owners are coming out of the woodwork, I mean CEOs who sell guns are coming out of the woodwork.
I, I agree.
I, I'm here 'cause I would love for you to come out of the woodwork and, and stand up for this issue and I know you care about it 'cause of the vigils you've held, I know you care about it.
Of course I care about it, I, I, and thank you. I do and I'm glad it came across as far as the environment and I'm not running a campaign, but I think my positions are pretty clear with, uh, with, with inclusion and diversity. I agree a hundred percent and when I speak to him, by the way, I tell him, I'm coming at you hard with this gun stuff. But that doesn't necessarily mean-
But behind closed doors.
No, it's not behind closed doors, 'cause we haven't started anything, we're still talking about the planning stages yet, we're still talking about drafting this letter. We got a little bit distracted with the two hundred thousand because I am concerned, I want the basketball court to go forward, I don't wanna waste, again, I start off, I don't wanna waste too much time with it and you guys wanna do it-
I don't think we'd be having this vigorous of a conversation if that was not a problem.
That's fine, and if we never talk about it again, that'd be great too. I wanna just continue, I, I wanna protect the twenty thousand, but I wanna also do everything we possibly can on the gun control front. I'll be honest with you, I'm not willing to cut ties and say we no longer have a senator, I don't think that's in the best interest of Newcastle.
I'm not even suggesting that, I think just saying this, this issue.
Okay, fine, good. I agree a hundred percent.
This issue is a line of sand for our community and since I'm at the helm,
I agree a hundred percent.
I want you to know, this is a line of sand.
I, I agree a hundred percent and let me tell you something, in the past, I, I know, and I probably shouldn't say this and I'm probably gonna regret saying it, but that's okay. In the past, I've, I've opened my big mouth and have endorsed people and like I said, the last election's only become a freaking, uh, distraction. Most people couldn't care less what I think anyway, so all I do is open myself up to attacks and, and things like that, but the fact is, I'll be perfectly honest with you, there's no way I'm ever gonna endorse somebody who, who's not supporting these positions on gun control because it's, it's too important a position and I have no problem saying that. But the fact is, is that, you know, I, we all agree, the, the, the thing is that we all agree on, I think, every, every issue we agree on, everything, whether, everything I mentioned this letter, I think we all agree upon what, what he should be supporting, what he should be opposing, we agree on every single thing. You guys may know more about the issue than I do and then add to the letter, more, maybe you know more of his past votes than I do, then add to the letter. I, you did a great research on local stuff, you know, there's tons of education that we can, we need to do. But what I'm not willing to do is, is cut ties with our senator because I honestly don't think that's in the best interest of the town.
Is there something in between?
Yes, and that's what we're talking about, I'm coming at him hard on gun control.
Let's say, say- This is a strong letter, but, but, it is a strong letter, but I mean going public, but using your community.
Of course it's gonna go public, I said send it to every single supervisor, Westchester, I said-
Did you come newsletter? You might've come late.
Yes, the last one's a newsletter and this one'll be a newsletter.
And we wanna send it to the press, we wanna send it to all the other municipalities, we'll, we'll get more people to sign us, go up, send it to every Republican, every Senator.
Exactly, I'm gonna send everything's a newsletter. I even send the press.
Get under the table, maybe.
I hope other towns follow or leave with the kids.
Then are you basically saying that you want to say-
Can I say something, I'm kinda nervous, that's where I'm gonna to, you know, I have all this, um, correct, I, I mean, I am a Democrat, but this is a nonpartisan
Be careful, be careful.
Right.
issue.
It should be.
And, but if people from the Republican side were actually to verbalize that along with us, for him to see that we're all coming together, that this is everybody's issue, not just, you know, the, the Democrats, would that have more power?
You mean to get Republicans in town behind it?
Yeah, and also any decision, actually them to, you know, to say that they're Republican.
No doubt.
Make real changes.
And beyond.
And not in this town, but to get neighboring towns where there are more Republicans, that we are united in this. I don't know.
The more, I, I'm, more people you have and more people who otherwise support him, at the party, yes, and, uh, of course, I mean, it's a fair statement.
It's a good idea, but it's-
Yeah.
And this, and by the way, there's a lot of value in, in, you know, and forget about me, okay, forget about me personally, but there's definitely value when a Republican senator has a Democrat, uh, town supervisor endorsing him, okay? Forget about me, it could be anybody, right? But when you have a Republican senator, in this day and age especially, having a Democrat endorse you, that's something you're gonna talk about, especially if it's in Hillary Clinton's hometown and Governor Cuomo's hometown. That's something to talk about and, and, and if you don't have that to talk about, I think that also, uh, that helps. But make no mistake about it, in this day and age, when you could say that you work across the aisle and, and you have some, you have somebody from the other side of the aisle supporting you, that's a pretty big thing in this day and age, I mean.
But he's not gonna say that anymore, right?
Not unless he cha- not unless he changes his position on gun control.
A with an R, yeah.
But I'm not willing to cut my ties with him, and I'm not, and I'm not willing to get back to two hundred thousand dollars.
This is music to my ears. This is music to my ears.
Can I say something really quick on the kids thing? Try as best you can, and I know you, Rob, try to let the kids guide it, this is something the various gun movements across the country are struggling with. Step way back as adults and say to them, you do it.
That's a good idea.
Right, I, I'm telling you, it rings very hollow to have somebody, the adults behind the scenes pull on the strings. And, you know, they're planning these marches on the twenty fourth, so I'd invite, I'd want them to work with the other groups and not make it seem like suddenly we're, you know, we have all the answers. And also, please involve Moms Demand Action, I mean, they were up and going five days after Newtown. They know what legislation matters, they, it's all evidence based with them, so all these great pie in the sky ideas are great, but in reality, it's ERPO and it's research, right? So, you know, fine, throw a lot of things at them, I think it's better probably to focus, but let me involve you, invite you.
Don, we're also involving, just so you know, I'm a Sandy Hook ambassador
Of course.
and we're, um, involving that whole group as well, we're planning things with the school and the students to try to handle it.
Excellent, okay. To say anything that is-
As long as the students have the tools, so it's not just a, it's a term, but no, no, the defense, as long as not a photo op, it's, it's really engaging, educational and questions are asked.
Yeah, of course.
Max, you're in charge.
Well, the Moms Demand Action today just said they're gonna, they have Students Demand Action, they have a toolkit, they're giving them funding, so you know, so without holding their hands, it's better to let them-
Well, I'm, I'm meeting with Christine this week, so maybe we can, we can hook up and talk about that.
Max, you're in charge.
Okay, cool. Okay, cool.
I mean, the best, the model is that the kids say to you, we need buses and then we help get them buses, let the kids say what.
Yeah, right, yes, right.
Well, Christine, the superintendent said, she's, she could do it as a field trip and we can get the buses.
It's hard to look back, I know.
We need buses.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I think I say about this long list, you're right, there's, there's a few issues, but when you talk about also compromise, I mean, we can list fifteen different things that we, 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 uh, support and, and seven different things that we vehemently, you know, disagree with him on. If we get him to, you know, support a couple of them and maybe pull back on some of the other things, he's not gonna do everything we say, but the point is, you're giving him a whole bunch of stuff. If the stuff in Florida, if you look at the, what was just recently passed in Florida, I mean, that's not, that's not great as a Democrat.
No, it's not, well, it's not.
That's not so great, but you know something? It's better than nothing.
Better than nothing.
It's a start, it's a move, it's a start.
Yeah, I'm from Florida, yeah.
And that's, that's the same thing, I mean, you know, we're not gonna get everything, that's for sure as heck.
Can I say one other quick thing that, that's always kinda bothered me about this town? The leading cause of gun deaths are suicides.
I know.
And I feel like, I'm sorry to say it, that we kinda sweep suicide under the rug here and ones I know about are from guns. So maybe that's something we need to look at at a town level and the next leading cause is domestic abuse, which I hear there's a lot of here, which we also sweep under the rug. So if we're thinking hyper local, I'm just throwing out, not another committee, I'm just throwing out, maybe that's something to think about.
Well, you know, the whole thing about the gun buyback program, to be perfectly honest with you, when I first heard that suggestion, I thought it was a little like silly, like, do we really need that here, but the truth is, is like, it goes to the suicide point. If you can get some guns out of the hands of people.
If there's not a gun in the house, they're not gonna-
Right.
Well, thank you everyone that I've been around, thank you, they were very productive.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you as a partner, struggling with this.
That's very funny.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
How about we have an agreement, you never call me Republican, no?
Sorry.
I hit a nerve, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get attacked, I'm sorry. But it does hit a nerve. Yeah, it's okay, all right, take care, Jane. But Max, you're in charge, can we talk about it?
Right.
Is everything okay, guys?
They just didn't wanna be involved in this, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just asking, something's going on.
No, 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 um, the, um, so, uh, just trying to finish up with Con Ed, we have had a terrific liaison with us, um, a guy by the name of Michael Jones Bay who has been, um, helping us coordinate efforts between, believe it or not, the single, uh, restor- the single cutting crew, cut and clear crew that Con Ed assigned to us and DPW and he's been able to secure crews for us, um, for daytime and nighttime.
That's great.
Which is fabulous.
We're not letting him leave, right.
Yeah, the problem is, is that they're, they're trying to pull him and I'm, so I'm trying to write a quick email that just says how amazing he's been because, uh, they are telling us that ninety percent of Newcastle will be restored tonight by eleven P M, but the rest of us will not be until-
I'm still out.
Well, I'm still out too, but I also got an email.
Until Friday and then-
Just for the record, everyone thinks that we have clout and pull, you are still out?
Wow, that is, yeah, live time. Yeah, Friday till eleven P M and I don't want them to pull him until we're done because I don't-
On Friday at eleven.
Absolutely.
And it's gonna be worse too.
Certainly after the snowstorm tomorrow too.
Yes.
It's gonna be worse, yeah, I mean, we-
It's gonna get worse before it gets better.
You're the first who will fix the guys in charge.
Yeah, I, you know, so, um, do we, does the town board, would it help if we go out and call with somebody?
I, I don't know who to call, I'm just, I'm literally writing to, uh, to Jane Solnik, Luigi Dingo and, uh-
Ivy bells her twice and I've got her back from her.
Orlando Al, busy, yeah. Um, well, I have to tell you that if you call her at, what, five thirty in the morning, you can catch her, she's usually sleeping, but I, I-
She was, she was great today, you know, that went out today and she was, uh-
Then I should call her by three.
I have been calling her awfully early in the morning just to catch her, you know, we need to open our schools, um, so, uh, we would really appreciate it.
They were actually very responsive with that, I would say, with the things.
Yes, well, they were-
So you want to continue while you, like that?
Yeah, if you don't-
The, the problem is, the problem is, the plain, the plain truth is that they didn't have enough crews, whether the crews were in Puerto Rico or whether they were slow to get mutual aid and, and then it's a numbers game and they're gonna freaking hit places like Yonkers and more dense locations 'cause they can restore a greater number of people.
My, my wife is, my wife has texted me about no power, so I'm gonna take action step back.
I've been getting texts too about that, somebody, my, one of my neighbors asked, what are you gonna do about it? I said, I just gotta move to Friday, eleven o'clock, what are you gonna do about it? I said, I'm gonna go buy more gas for my generator, that's what I'm gonna do about it.
So let's just take a moment so Jill can send out that message on this matter and then-
Okay, so can we adjourn for a bathroom break for two seconds?
If the supervisor on Main concurs.
Sure, I'll be taking a joke.
I was continuing to talk, but it's a good, stop.
You can talk, okay.
Well, we're just gonna, you wanna break a break, but we continue to talk about like the storm. We still have three people, if we wanna just continue.
There were, there were six-
Yes, oh, absolutely.
Six trucks going through Grace Lane along with a bulldozer on my way over here at six thirty this evening.
Yeah, they have been, their restoration crews, um, have been over in, uh, they call them roaming restoration-
Restoration?
Yeah, no, no, here, sorry, please, and then you said, sorry, so, sorry, got it.
Yeah, write the email to them, take a break.
So, um, yeah, they're doing, yeah, they're doing roaming restoration crews, um, which means that they have identified the largest number of people that they can restore that you, you know, and trying to pull them back on, it's a numbers game.
Yeah. That's what they do.
Um, and so they're in, uh, they're in Millwood, they're also, I think, uh, in the vicinity of maybe Hitching Post, but I did-
Well, that would be, that would be me, they were there today, but they left because they said they was the wrong crew.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and we had, and they finally, I believe that they've opened or they, or have been working on opening Quoten Lake Road, they needed to get a crane from New Rochelle, traveling twenty miles an hour from New Rochelle up to here, so they got them, um.
You know what the big problem is too, is that for people like me that have a generator, you know, a temper- like a portable generator, now it's gonna be outside and it's gonna be snowing. Electricity and water don't really mix.
You have to put a tent over-
I know, but it's gonna be forty mile an hour winds. So I'm putting it, I'm gonna put, um-
There's one, there's one that clamps onto the actual-
I don't, we don't have that. I'm gonna put a bridge table over it with weight on it, that was my idea, it was a good idea.
That'll work, that'll work.
But, uh, the problem is, I gotta have to keep on shoving the snow from the sides of it.
To keep it clear.
It's a real, uh, you know, it's, it's like, it's like you didn't have enough to do with the gas and the whatever. Max, you're gonna have to come and shovel my generator.
Can, why don't I just update you, um, on the water rents?
He knows I'm kidding, he knows I'm kidding, of course he knows I'm kidding.
I hope we know who's kidding, okay, water rents, so water rents are, um, outstanding water bills, uh, for a year. Um, and it's just to, to let you, did we get, we're not getting the numbers yet, we're gonna have them?
We, they're in here.
Yeah.
So we do have, I have the updated one, but since I made copies of packet, one person given a page, so it's one less.
What? Yeah. So.
Oh, Jane, I think she's just talking about like-
Yeah, it's, it's just a administrative item, so just if you had any questions on, on water rents.
It starts at the seventy-five?
Okay, great. And basically, it just gets added, it's a long, I don't know, it's a transport.
Yep.
Okay? Well, okay, um, that's not what we're onto that, take a bag, leave a bag, this has been a, a SAB initiative that, um, trying to remember, uh, I think Swatna's son came in, Vishna, to talk to us about
Yeah.
Uh, last year and he basically set up like a, uh, one of those little newspaper stands and if you have a recycle bag, you put it in there or give an extra one, you need it when you take one with our, uh, you know, the bag initiative, it seemed to work, he wanted it to be, he wanted to come back to it, SAB wanted to run with it, the problem is just because it would be a streetscape, I'm hesitant to have them put anything on the street, so, um, they were gonna ask permission to put it, um, in front of Walgreens and Rite Aid for now. Until we're done with the streetscape and then we'll try to provide more permits after it.
And this is something that, um-
Okay. I would use that one in front of Walgreens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was right there.
I know. Plus, then he also, on the Village Market, they wanna do it, but the, the, the streetscape they-
Not right, yeah, you just have to get it.
He's, no, he wants him to do it.
Okay.
And so the town is gonna pay five hundred dollars to put a-[1691.61] Take it back.
Next on the agenda.
Yeah, the scenic cuts in the municipal resolution urging the D E C to issue district regulations on anguish grounds.
Sorry.
Fine with that?
Yeah, okay, good. Um, we've got a couple of street opening permits from DPW. Um, extension, um, for the purchase and installation of highway materials, we've got two of them, one is Seneca Painting. Um, and the other one is Fail Industries, so we're basically keeping the same price and terms for another year, storm materials. Um.
Can I ask you a slightly unrelated question?
Yes.
For with streetscape.
Mm-hmm.
Just with the, uh, with the storm and obviously we haven't been able to, haven't been able, Con Ed's been slightly busy and we haven't been able to do, um, work, are we gonna be expecting any kind of delay change order?
They're not supposed to be trying to add that work right now.
They're, yeah, they're not so, they're not supposed to be, I, I am concerned down the road.
Yeah. We're gonna be able to work.
Because this whole line crew was the line crew that we were getting and we had just had meetings on it, they're doing some, um, last sketches and then they were going to be handing to Con Ed a list of the eighteen poles that we were.
I know, that's what I, you know, during the other day when they said, we have plenty of poles, I was like, I hope they're not our poles.
Yeah, I, I know, I had a laugh when they said that to me, I'm like, oh my god. Yeah, they're using our poles, but that, I'm not so worried about that, I'm worried that the crews are still going to be engaged in doing full restorations
Right. Yeah.
when they were supposed to be here and they only have a limited number.
Right.
There is a lot that we can do, we can still set the curbs.
Okay.
Um, we can still, um, put in the conduits and, and complete the stormwater and the sewer connections. The only thing is, is that the, for the sections of concrete on this, the street where the poles are gonna be moved to and the existing poles are, we're not gonna be able to take it anymore, worry that.
Right.
So, at some point, I do expect there to be some delay, I don't know what that looks like right now and I don't know. I'm just not sure.
So, um, at the last meeting, Rob was the acting, um.
Yes.
And he did a very fine job.
Not be right, not be right.
I knew he would, I was very confused there for a minute.
It's good she gave me a compliment after.
No, wait, I must be mistaken, yes.
Yeah, really.
So, um, anyways, one of the things I had done is I've told him about the report that I had marked up for you.
Yeah, did.
And that maybe we could, the three of us could meet, because you know, he is a numbers man.
Yes. No, no, he's, he's definitely a numbers guy and so, we lost Mike Nowak, who was our head of ELQ, he left the company. We had a new person in. So when we had the meeting the other day, um, I introduced myself to Leo, I told, I showed him what the charts were, I told him what we wanted.
You were able to explain the charts from my drawing to him?
Yes, um, and actually, um, um, Bob Seoli was actually taking a combination of the charts and putting them together and then presenting them to Leo so that he would have all of the, like, we sort of liked the little blurb that described what each one of the, um, five different sections were. Um, we thought that would be very helpful to people just looking at it. So, um, we asked him to take and just combine the both of them, put them in an Excel sheet and then give it to Leo so that he could work from that point forward. But there was a bunch of.
I think it's wet, it won't work.
Taking it to the truck.
Anyways, that's fine, so, and if, but if anybody has any questions, or Bob Seoli has questions, will you reach out to them?
Yes.
We will.
'Cause I mean, this is now, we are about to go into the most, like, money's gonna pour out the door.
What are we on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's actually remarkable to me how slowly they are.
What are we on?
Well, we're, we're kind of moving beyond this stuff, now it's going, it's gonna be good weather, everyone's, you know, it's gonna start pouring out the door, it's gonna.
Well, yeah, I, uh.
It's gonna be a ch- oh, we're not allowed here, uh, okay.
That's right, that's what we want.
No, 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 it's fine, we, we have the money, it's just, yeah.
We say, we report.
Um.
Okay, sorry.
Some, something, let me just bring up something, since we talked about streetscape, we don't need to spend too much time, but something I was discussing at the last meeting on Friday was possibly, uh, switching to day and night work. Because when they're talking about doing the laterals for the sewers, you know, laterals basically means from going from the street to the individual, individual buildings and they're gonna be making gigantic holes and covering it up. And at some point, it's, it's like, you know, is, is that better and having that sit there like that all day? Or just having a crew there, do the lateral connection, patch it up.
That would be a change order.
Patch, no, it's not a bad thing, no, yeah, it's not, it wouldn't be.
No.
The night work, the, the.
No, no, it was always gonna be night work, we would switch it to day as well, so it's actually cheaper.
Both, we do both.
The question is if we can do double time and make it in.
Yeah, yeah, that would, yeah, get it done, cool.
Catch up, that would be good. Quickly.
Because.
But I mean, I think the thing that we talked about is that we need to reach out exactly to the merchants.
Merchants.
And, and actually, to be honest with you, I already have the email to the merchants, but I didn't, I didn't send it yet.
Take the temperature. Oh, okay.
A hundred percent.
I didn't send it yet because we had this power outage and I just figured, let's get besties first.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But the fact is, we, we, there was a good idea you suggested, let's talk to the merchants. But the reason this came up too is because it's kind, and the reason it's tied into this Con Ed thing is because, I mean, listen, right now, part of the reason they had a delayed response is because they have a lot of crews in Puerto Rico. We know that for a fact, because they've been telling us that for the past month. Because we're trying to get dates when they're gonna move these poles and they keep on saying we got a lot of crews in Puerto Rico. Now, for some reason, they're not acknowledging in that, that now, and that, that's okay. With this power outage, but the issue remains that they got a lot of crews in Puerto Rico. And Con Ed made delay our project, so, which could cost us some time, so the goal is to try to not only, uh, you know, get, get the, get the patchwork done as soon as possible with the lateral connections, but also, we can make up some time that we may lose down the road because of Con Ed.
We should talk to the merchants, but my view is if we can get it done faster, that might be better.
And we don't wanna go into another holiday season, right?
Alright, just kind of just ripping off the bandaid.
So the truth really important is to understand what the dependencies are.
Exactly.
'Cause it's gonna be annoying to have twenty metal plates get into their stores anyway, so.
Con Ed work.
It could even be worse than metal plates, these are gonna be gigantic holes, they don't even know where some of these laterals are.
Yeah, so. Don't, we, we can't do. Yeah, so I think we're better off just.
X, Y, Z, so, John tells me that, that if they weren't able to move a pole, you know, but that was eight hole.
Have to close the sidewalk completely.
So the question is that they, well, if we can't move eighteen poles, what does that imply?
So, well, I think you're still setting out the, you, you just mean not the happens, their, their pending, those are.
I think because, uh, you know, we were talking about, well, that one is eight.
Yeah, I know, I think that's.
And the poles are.
I might have to think, ripping off the bandaid is probably the best approach, but, but it's still, they have to say.
Me too.
I see, yeah, and by the way.
It's, it's gonna take three weeks and we can do it in a week and a half, both day and night, let's, let's do it.
You know, like I was telling Lisa in a little prior conversation just now, it's not even like, we're not even talking about metal plates, we're talking about sidewalk's being closed in a section where people are gonna have to, because it turned into the street, you know, around, because this hole's gonna be bigger than the metal plate. Um, you know, we're not, we're talking about, you know, it's a problem.
But I think it's where you.
And, and everybody, none of the merchants wants to go into the holiday season, which is, you know, so it's, uh.
Because this.
Alright, so shoot off that email to it.
Can we get the speaker back on agenda for today?
I was hoping to, uh, wait to the outage.
Main street.
I'm gonna send an email, but I'm gonna get many complaints about the outage.
And John.
Okay, so, go back.
Alright, next.
Did you want to do the last extension?
So, um, the last extension to the highway, uh, maintenance materials was for Pecan Industries, okay? Next, uh, one near and dear to Jeremy's heart is declaration of surplus vehicles and authorization to auction along with the authorization to enter into a new two-year agreement with Auctions International, which is the auction house that we use.
Mm-hmm.
Why is that near and dear to you?
I was, I'm staying away from it, it's my.
You like auctions?
He's been terrific about universal knowledge.
We're on an auction, right? So things are sitting right.
Circles.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it just cash in your pocket, there you go.
Very cool, okay.
Um, beautification advisory board, they wanted to add a request. Royston School would like a mulch donation, so they're doing a project, we just, that's okay? Be pretty brief, thanks. Um, Rob, you wanna talk about the Senate Street Firehouse letter?
Okay, the Senate, the Senate Street Fires, that, I mean, listen, the, the reason, the impetus for this letter, to be honest with you, is that nobody wants to tell the fire department what to do. That's not really the goal of this, of the letter. The goal of the letter is basically just to document what, what happens, which is we've had a number of people, you know, who have asked us, you know, who might Con Ed act for this firehouse, I wanna put in a restaurant. One is a local resident, actually, two are local residents, but one is a local resident actively looking for it now. Um, and others, other people have asked too, and quite honestly, I, the reason I think it's important to get it out there is because they wanna build a new firehouse. Um, the one thing that's holding up, uh, the sale of the Senate Street Firehouses is, is the fact that they don't wanna divest themselves of it until they have the approval to build a new firehouse. And I think people should realize that, I think people should realize that fact. I think people should also realize that if they do sell the firehouse, there are a lot of, there are a lot of restaurants that are interested in opening it. Whatever, what they decide to do remains to be seen, what residents decide to do as far as the new firehouse remains to be seen. I think residents should know that there are people who wanna turn that firehouse into, into a, a restaurant. And that the only reason the fire department's holding on to it is because, uh, they need.
Because they use the building?
They use the building. Yes.
So.
But isn't it just a store, it's just a purpose?
They use the building for two purposes.
No, they get a lot, they, they, the gym is above it, they do a lot of training at that building.
Why can't they use the Millwood Gym? They could use the Millwood Fire Department Gym, it's beautiful. Right, and they could also train, they could, we could probably find a spot for their antique, antique truck.
Yeah, they only told us the truck in the gym, that's all they told us they do now.
That is all they told us.
They do, and they also do training, so they have a lot of things with a lot of the explorer clubs. They have to basically go and pass a series of rounds. And so they set up like navigation courses, ladder lifting, um, pulling hose, they actually use that space as it stands now. So I think that, um, and I guess my question is, have we basically given the Board of Fire Commissioners contact information to these individuals so they can reach out to them?
Yes.
They sent them, yeah.
Yes, and, and.
They sent them a letter.
Yes, and they basically, they send them a letter.
Okay.
And they CC, and they, and they basically, you know, come back to us. Listen, again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, you know, I'm not telling, suggesting that we should tell the fire department what they should do or shouldn't do, especially when it comes to training and things like that. All I'm saying is that I think residents deserve to know that there's a lot of people who have expressed an interest in opening a restaurant at a location and according to the fire department, the only thing holding back the sale of that firehouse is their expansion. That if they were able to expand their current firehouse, they have every intention of divesting themselves of that firehouse. And residents should know that there have been many, many restaurants who have been interested in, uh, in opening a restaurant there.
What's the ti- what's the timeline on approval for an expansion?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a referendum. So they have to come up, it's, it's, it's probably two years ago.
It's not in the district, it's not. But we still have to prove it, when I say we, the town has to prove for C F O and all.
They're tendering, they're just approvals, I believe, right?
Well, well. Well, I mean, the question is, right now, they are taking down the old building.
Right.
I think there's some discussion, there's change in the board structure as it stands now. There's probably some discussion about, uh, exactly what's being kept from the prior plan, what's not being kept from the prior plan.
Right.
So they've got some work to do, they need to know what their program is gonna be and so on and so forth. And maybe they've come closer to it, I haven't been monitoring it that closely, but I think, great, we let residents know, haven't we just let them know there's lots of interest in the firehouse, but ultimately, really, they have to maintain the enthusiasm of their volunteers. And so if there's amenity that, you know, you're pressuring like that is to do what? So you can say I sent them a letter? It's, I don't get it, I think that if we wanna make sure that they have all the named people who are interested in that firehouse, 'cause ultimately, it will be going on the market.
I guess I just feel like, um, I, Ivy Poole, as a resident of Chappaqua and somebody on Chappaqua Moms, support this idea, I would love to have a firehouse in our community that were a restaurant, I think it's cool, I agree with all of that. Um, but as a board member, I, I don't understand how it's our place to send this letter. And the only part of this letter that actually stood out for me that I thought to myself, okay, if we were to shift the focus of the letter and really make it about that, was this last sentence, which is, we stand ready to work with your board to make this a reality. If we were to shift the focus of the letter and say, you know, if you wanted to, we understand that you've received an offer, if you wanna move forward with that offer and you need help with X, Y, Z, you know, with zoning, with this, with that, you know, then we're, we're prepared, you know, to work with you on that, I think that's a different sort of tone and actually is in our bailiwick as opposed to.
I think that's a very, that's compromised.
It's, it's, it's a good idea and I would take it even a step further, if, if, I mean, listen, if they say that they use the building for X, Y, and Z purposes, purpose, and, and you didn't technically say this, but it's consistent with your idea, maybe you, maybe you did say it. But if, if we, if, if we basically say, wanna use the building, and maybe we can help you also find other uses for it. I mean, listen, the gym, we may be able to work something out with Lifetime Fitness, that says that our volunteer firemen can, you know, have free memberships or something. Um, as far as the storage, maybe we can work out, have a place where they can help store it. So I mean, the point is, we could basically, maybe they do do it for training, but maybe there's other places they could do for training. I mean, the fact is, we should, every single, in my opinion, every single property owner needs to do their part to make our downtown more vibrant, and they are a property owner. I'm not saying anything that's gonna, you know, jeopardize, uh, fire safety or anything like that, I'm just saying, if we can help in any way, they would get money from it, right, they're gonna make money off the, off, off the sale. And the fact is, listen, you really, and I don't need to tell you this.
I'm sure the money from the sale is already factored in their overall budget calculations, it's, it's, they need to.
I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is.
It's not like it's a windfall, it's already like part of their math for a street.
But don't, if, but don't you, I, I personally think, and I think if residents know that this firehouse is gonna be sold, when they get approval for the new firehouse, I think there'd be more support for, for building a new firehouse. And, and you know as, as well as I do, that nothing will help increase recruitment than a new firehouse. You know, and, and residents also need to know that if they don't have people volunteering, we're gonna go to a paid fire department that's gonna raise everybody's taxes, I'm not even in the fire district, I'm in Mancisco Fire District. But residents need to understand those, those financial implications.
I, so my feeling is, to a certain extent, that I would fully support a le- a letter like that from basically saying when you're, you know, if and when you, you know, if you're ready, I think most people know that the current firehouse has been sold. They've been very public about their intention to sell that house. Um, they are, they had a resounding defeat on the referendum to raise the money, it was, I don't wanna say, it was a resounding defeat. And so now what they need to do is they need to rebuild confidence, it might take a couple of years and they need to confirm their costs and the plans. I think to take somebody, a situation, the last election, you know, was a madhouse. Um, not the most recent, but the one before, you know what I mean?
I know, yeah.
Was a madhouse, and to sit there and kind of make residents think that the fire district is not being responsible because they're not selling that firehouse tomorrow, is only throwing sort of dissonance into which be a very clear conversation, which is the existing firehouse, they need to demonstrate to residents that it no longer serves the need of the firefighters, the safety of the community, they're gonna have to go to bond and they have to win support. To sit there and create sort of a friction, because you want a restaurant versus a safety building, I, I think is unproductive, which is why I think Ivy's idea is constructive.
Well, I, 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 the way it was changed, I think it's, you know, but.
But I, but also.
We're gentle and, and.
I agree a hundred percent with the changes, but my letter, I, I was trying to, I haven't actually read it since I, I sent it two weeks ago, but my letter, the goal of my letter was not to put pressure on them to do something that they wouldn't wanna do. Honestly, the goal of my letter was basically to tell residents, hey, if you wanna restaurant this firehouse, you better approve their new firehouse, because not only are they gonna increase their, uh, volunteers and, and to possibly avoid a paid fire department, but we can have a nice restaurant in their current location. That's really the point of the letter, is to build support for a new firehouse, is to give residents, is to make it very clear to residents that a new firehouse is in our interest and this is just one more reason for it. That's the reason not to put pressure.
The residents are gonna see this letter.
No, well, they, they would, I mean, they may see it as far as, uh, what like Dawn mentioned, that everything goes in the newsletter.
He's, he's a very good communicator, we've heard that tonight.
I mean, if, listen, if we put it, if I put a letter to them, I put a link and they would send a letter.
I think that we can do, if we can say that in general. I think we can say that, but I really think it's, you know, they're the ones that have to, they're the ones who have to get that bond approved.
It's true.
Yeah, and I have to tell you that, that I think public outreach and transparency and the conversation is gonna go.
Yeah.
It may be handled differently this time.
Yeah, I, I think we'll go very far in our building trust, 'cause.
That's their, that's, that's their issue.
It is, you're right, that is their issue.
It's their issue.
That's their issue.
I know it's their issue, but unfortunately, it's our issue, because, yeah, obviously, these hours.
It's our issue.
But I think, I understand, but they, I think what they need to do is they need to settle on the program and.
No, no. Yep, yep, and this will follow, but yeah, I don't know the people who.
And what we can do is absolutely say that, you know, over the years, we've seen repeated the sale of the firehouse and the estimate, the appraisal they receive, we think is achievable. Um, because they need to appraise it, they can't sell it for less than what it's worth, there's a whole lot of process they need to go through.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 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 just same, yeah, okay.
Again, but the point, the point is just to let residents know that, that, that.
Oh. But anyways, I, I do support Ivy's idea of basically being as supportive as we can of their process going forward to increase the value of that firehouse for future sale value, if we can help them do that, I am very supportive of that. I mean, the only other thought is that, given that we're doing the streetscape, if they were thinking about selling, there was anything we needed to somehow incorporate that.
Build them to.
That's a great idea. Build into it, it would be nice to go back now.
Yeah, because right now, we, we are.
That's good.
That's a great idea.
You should mention that, that should be factored.
That's a great idea.
You know, you know what's interesting?
Ivy, you're gonna amend the letter?
Is that the, the historical.
Come on.
I am not your intern.
Because we're gonna stop the sidewalk.
You know, what, did I get a change in direction?
I'm sorry, what?
The historical society had asked us to stop the sidewalk at the corner, not go around.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes I'd rather be there.
So they just turned out, that big tree, you know, so that, you know, he would, if that's going to be a, a restaurant
Right, it's gonna look like.
or some sort of commercial.
We might want, if they wanted to, they want to take a look at that.
Yeah, my, uh, exactly.
That's a, it's a very good idea as far as it's concerned.
Okay.
So I would put that in there, so.
Yep.
Okay.
But it's, it's not, it's not, I mean, listen, if they get divested sooner rather than later and we can help them do that, so the benefit of downtown, it's.
I, all I'm just saying is, they've got, it's, they've got a different series of problems, the immediate thing of wanting to, like, say we got a restaurant versus some of the issues they're dealing with.
It's, it's only for some of the stuff.
I mean, it needs to be put in perspective, I, anything we can do to help them, I think would be well received.
But don't you, don't you think on a side note, I think we all agree on this, and I'm not, I don't mean this as an argument.
Yeah.
As a side note, if they actually did that, if we worked with them and they were able to divest sooner rather than later, and then a restaurant opened and it moves in, it works into the streetscape and it looks great and adds the vibrancy, they'd get a lot of goodwill from that too. I'm not saying to do it in a, in a, in a threatening way, it's not the goal, but they would get a lot of goodwill from that too, because people will be psyched, you know.
Um, we're reading, we're.
I don't mean it in a bad way.
Yeah, Main Street.
Um, wait, let's just finish up, uh, Girl Scout cookie sales, you know, I'm doing, I'm really doing it.
No.
I can polish off a box of vitamins once a.
Oh, I forgot to bring my order forms.
I think it's so funny.
payment.
You think I'm kidding, Bill already knows, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
If they ever make green-free vitamins.
They, they make green-free toffee tablets.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Main Street name change.
It has.
I have really changed my attitude on the Main Street name change, I actually think we need to do it.
Okay, so the question is this though.
I, I think, right, I, I.
Okay.
I agree.
Well, I don't disagree, but I just wanted to raise something to the board.
I agree.
Your polls are new again.
So, there's two parts of Main Street, one is the public part of the road, which is between Crowell Road and Kisco Park Drive.
I, I listen. Yes, Con Ed is.
Crowell.
That you think.
Mm-hmm. This is the private section from Kisco Park Drive down to the street, and this is where those pictures are taken. Um, the problem is, is that there are seventeen property owners that have Main Street addresses.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, they only got seven.
Now I'm in March eight.
I noticed that.
Yes, seven property owners, it's, it's, it's.
Just fine, they're unbelievably.
No, two, we're on the.
Yeah, so I put yeses and, and, and not on the petitions.
Only got seven, I know, because they're doing no wire delivery, so it was very.
The reason why, because they provided, people didn't wanna change the name, remember when they came the last time?
No, no, I know they were divided last time, but I actually thought there would have been more of a conversation, I mean.
I mean, sad.
Yeah.
You know, I need to get from Croton Lake Road to Main Street, right?
Yeah.
And I'm, try to always do shortcuts, so I don't have to go back on one thirty-three. And so I thought I could do it over Hog Hill and then sort of, or Carrot Hill or whatever it's called, I, it's like, I'd get lost every time. So I typed into GPS, the Main Street address I needed to get to, and invariably, I'm taken to Main Street. the Main Street address I needed to get to and invariably I'm taken to Main Street of Mount Kisco.
I know, but that's, see, that's the inverse of their problem.
Main Street or East Main Street?
I I I type in East Main Street, I'm still taking to Main Street of Mount Kisco, I'm not taking to that.
Main Street, they're they're
They don't care if people, if people wind up in Mount Kisco, they care if delivery trucks have to make U-turns in their yard.
They they don't
End up there.
Right, but I think, but obviously, but I but I gotta tell you, I was actually thinking that maybe we could do it like Crow Hill Road North.
I don't think they want Crow Hill Road North, I think what they
Uh, they want their own street name.
They want their own like little street name and I was wondering if it as a compromise, well as it stands now, if the
Maybe we should call them East Main Street.
I had to change it to Main Street M A N E, different spelling for the navigation system.
And just out of curiosity, uh are the houses clustered in any particular way or are they random?
There are, they are, they're small parcels, so they are.
Seven.
Mm, yeah.
So they they tend to be clustered over here, so this is the private section of Main Street where the trucks are getting actually stuck when they go down the street.
Mm-hmm.
And out of these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight parcels
Mm.
only three suggests, only three probably will suggest.
Wow.
So we can
Could the others say no?
They they're just not on the petition, so my N, yeah, but but my N is not, no, my N is
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't say that right.
That's for me. Cuz we had a lot of
Who were the, who were the people?
Three come to the meeting.
Who were the not Main Street people on the petition?
They Those, this person who has a Kisco Park Drive address, this person who has a Kisco Park Drive address
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
and somebody who has a Crow Hill Road address, which is somewhere outside.
It's all right, numbers count.
But didn't, but do they have a corresponding
But then there's so many more people who came to the meeting saying they wanted it.
Right, so s- seven did, but there were a number that didn't, so there are seventeen property owners who have a Main Street address.
There's a few.
You know.
Got it.
And only seven signed this petition saying
Got it.
Can the town send a letter to everybody on that street, say look, considering, oh.
We did.
Well, no, we did.
We did, we brought them in, they had a fight, we asked them to
Well, no, but can we just actually send them a letter with a form, the town is taking this petition up again.
They disagreed. Mm-hmm.
We would like to know, yeah, we would like to know your your, since you're the one directly affected, we wanna know is it, yes, I would like to change the name. Or no, I would like to keep the name and then room for any comment, because right now it could be, some people may be
I know, I know.
uh just sort of maybe not in a position to get involved, they may not have knocked on the door, they may not know them.
Right.
Yeah, I I think we have to send that.
Um
I really
In addition to saying we're gonna have a public meeting on it, because
Again.
sometimes mail just kinda, they go, oh yeah, I should send that and it gets tossed on the kitchen table, it's never seen coming in.
I toss it now, I just
Yeah, no, yeah, because because we reached out to everyone then last time, we got a very good response.
But I think if you say, they get a letter saying we're having a public hearing on this day, people would show up.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
I also really think that they should come to us and tell us what they want the proposed name to be, I think it would make a difference.
Ooh.
Oh, come on, we have so much fun, why don't we get to choose the name like
I agree with you.
I agree.
Right.
Like
Jeremy Lee.
Yeah.
But the thing is Maxley.
I think
Ma- Maxley.
I think we owe it to him.
Yeah, I've got a Max, I think Max
Maxley.
If I didn't turn rogue.
I'm turning rogue. Richard Dead End, is Dead End, Intern Dead End.
I think like Oh, yeah, Mary's
The cold set, cold set.
Lloyd, are you interested?
Yeah.
But I I also think that, uh, you know, I mean
Xander could sponsor it.
On that, on that street, the the fact is, is that there are people that are being more negatively impacted than others.
Right.
And I think those, I think those people, I don't think it should be just a numbers game with an up and down vote, I think, I understand, I I don't know if I suggest that.
Oh, no.
No, 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 and and that's fine, but then the board has to be prepared for 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 the majority of people coming and saying, I'm unhappy with this, you know, uh
Unless we have to give
I agree. I agree.
See, but to Ivy's point, did people say no or did they just not respond?
See, I agree. No.
No, 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 I and I don't, I don't know the answer, or no is that that we asked for a petition
Right.
Yep.
based upon that meeting that we had and what we got back was, I think we have a public ask people to come in and
I
It's
No, definitely, and like Ivy to your, to like the last meeting we had last year sometime, we could find the tape
Hack it out, yes, no.
Mm-hmm.
if we can find out when it's on the agenda, you know, the people would introduce themselves and say like, oh, okay, like, I'm Three, whatever, also known as Party City.
Yeah, that's
Party City, right, yeah, no, I mean, they, yeah, they 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 did, and I have to tell you, this is just silly stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have to be honest with you, half, half of the complaints were that people couldn't find them and the other half was that the people that they didn't want to find them did find them.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And I don't know how these, I mean, you literally have to put in Kisco Park to get this, but yet they're there. And just again, when when I used to live on the corner of Kisco Park Drive and Main Street and when we moved in there, our address needed was required to have Kisco Park and we were also a rural, a rural route.
Mm.
So my hard, my address was RR five, twenty-eight Kisco Park Drive, Kisco Park, Mount Kisco, New York.
Yeah.
So that there wasn't any of this
Yeah.
complication.
There also, there was also problems, I thought was actually equally troubling is that people would have their own personal packages, like delivers like Party City.
Delivered to the other
And now they're in Party City trying to find their little box of uh
Whatever it is and they
dog treats, whatever it was, you know, that's mixed up with all their other boxes.
Yeah. Right. Right, okay. All right.
I disagree.
And okay, and my very favorite of all time, are we ready for it, are we ready? Goals, objectives.
Page ninety-six, can you keep in track?
Dude.
Gosh.
We all
Come on now, come on, we got a big snowstorm coming, we've had it now, here.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta get out of Dodge.
Come on, this is a journey.
My whole family is in Jersey.
Why, are you going to a
They left the house? Really?
It's quite cold.
I was a bunker rock, you know.
Did they tell you where we're going?
Hey, hey, hey.
Oh. Okay, we, no. Really.
Wait, I can stay, wait a second, I can place it myself.
That's right.
It could be forty, but I'm gonna be like, keep it low.
Look, we've we've had some heavy topics tonight and it's out of
Yeah, I should, let's just quick, this is
Okay.
You don't want me doing
I gotta get home, I gotta pack up, I gotta
Wait, it's just, wait a minute, no, 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 that's, so so just give me a little bit.
I gotta get out.
I don't know, I don't have to go, but we we really should do this.
So just, you guys have to give me a little bit of a hint, because I I need to be, I literally need to put to put together um where the board wants to go this year and I, so I need a little bit of direction, I need a little bit of help from you as to what we're doing.
What does that mean, you need to put together where the board wants to go, is this like from a practical point?
I
Well, as as part of as as part of my responsibilities is to help the board identify the goals for the next two years. And to make sure that when I put the agendas together, that I take it, I move you towards those goals. So in the past, when we talked about wanting to pave the parking lot, how are we gonna do that, I put together that plan for it and helped the board do it. It was important for the board to do the Millwood sidewalk, we're moving ahead with those uh emergency operation plans, we're, you know, we're moving ahead with things. But I need the board to take a look at the things that we're currently in the midst of, to take a look at the priorities that they've set for the um comprehensive plan and just give me some guidance as to where your priorities are, I mean, I'm happy to move ahead with zoning studies. I'm happy to move ahead, we we're talking about um installation of sidewalks, everybody was, you know, on board with that. We're we're gonna move ahead with um identifying our current sidewalks, um
Mm.
what types of streets our new sidewalks might be on, does, is everything gonna be on a state sidewalk, is are there some county roads or there's some local roads that we might be able to expand going forward?
Well, there's a, I know, but there was some, I mean, Sabrina, we kind of gave her our five priorities and I thought that Sabrina was gonna go back
Yeah, that was under the comprehensive plan, this is more like general.
But I But just wasn't, I understand, but my understanding is um just sort of like, I I'm not saying that what you're saying and what you're asking for, which is kind of a fore looking to your guidance as to what you need to focus on. Um but I never heard back, some of the things we talked about was you know, we can either pick one thing or we can write an RFP that would be all encompassing, because these topics are related, so it would be a marginal incremental cost.
Yeah, so um as it turns out that that there are, when I presented these five to Sabrina and said to her, this is the five that the board has come up with.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a study that would knock out three out of the five and give us the biggest bang for the buck, her answer was not really.
Mm-hmm.
Which was a little disappointing, um I mean, as far as
Well, there was the five, but there were some that were related, right?
Yeah.
Right, so you know, you've got um master plan and when it talks about new locations for bike paths and and walkways, that's that's integrated with and directly related to the sidewalks on
Chappeline.
uh possibly, so we, you know, Bob Siole has the old uh feasibility study RFP for um the Chappeline, he's
But I hope that the conversation about the Chappeline doesn't take away from the larger conversation about either the sidewalk plan or
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
No, 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 nor it it wasn't meant to, but what it, what it was meant to do was to
It's a great purpose.
Or five, no, it's just
It's related, yes.
give the board options and one of the things that the board may wanna think about is, you know, when we initially talked about the Chappeline with the school district, they were tremendously supportive. The idea of having the cross-country team running along one seventeen is just not great. Um and they were clearly looking for someplace safer and a safer path for their kids to be able to get from the, you know, from Bell School up to the high school and to use the facilities. And maybe one of the things that the board can look at going forward, if we have in fact a feasibility plan in place, a realistic one, is uh partnering with the school district and seeing what that plan might look like if we have a viable partner, one that makes us far more attractive to grants and safe routes to schools, I mean, this is something that has tremendous
No, I I agree, but I do also, but I do also think that I, given
There's nothing else here, it's a good apartment.
the access and just access into the back of the school under the current situation.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
The actual dynamics of
Sequency.
of safety.
Yeah, but I I I actually disagree, I think it'll be safer.
Depending on the efficiency of safety.
There are, there are a lot of people kind of back there and I think it's actually controlled and you've significantly more people kind of
Right. No, I'm just saying, it's just
on it, that it may actually be safer.
Well, well, I I'm sort of curious as to where the the access point is going to be, I I would not
Who's gonna be changing us for that?
Exactly.
They're gonna have to cut through the back of the school.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so, that's not where I would put it if we were putting it, I actually would put it
Or if you wanna build the Trestle Bridge and then take them up Lloyd Brook.
Yeah, I think that sidewalks, no, we doubt Lloyd Brook would need a way to do it.
And the, and the other question is, do we fence them?
Well, there definitely fence.
You know, as a deterrent, all the way the whole length, because I think on the build plan, there was no fence.
Mm-hmm.
No, there was definitely a fence, there's
No, it's fenced.
Yes, it was definitely gonna be a fence.
There would definitely be a fence, cuz that's, the homeowner is what demanded, and it's ready fence for the school.
I I
They need a
Because it's gonna be a raised walkway, so it was going to, you would not have been able to access it from
And and I also
I mean, it'd be a nice fence.
from any place other than the path.
It's gonna be expensive fence.
It was
No doubt.
Yeah. But again, this is
I do still wanna walk that, uh, I still wanna walk that at some point, it's gonna be kind of wet, yucky, but maybe when it dries out a little.
But but this is, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you should wait, if the ground is considered as a bad wall.
I'm going tomorrow around eleven P M.
Oh, actually, snow is not terrible, that actually maybe, yeah.
I'll probably use your video.
But I I
Though the ground is frozen.
I I
It's not really
I I do, I do agree with Ivy though.
Mine is perfect, mine house, I gotta tell you.
It it should be a separate conversation, because it's, this is a
Yeah, yeah.
it's a whole controversial thing, it's it's, it shouldn't be part of our uh the comp plan, the goals and objectives, it's gotta be just its own separate thing. Cuz it's gonna divert, it's gonna take away too much attention from everything else. Well, there's gotten an inordinate amount of time on it too.
Okay.
Well, so they, the extreme
The thing that, yeah.
Our next work session.
Yeah, the thing that Sabrina, you know, wanted to to talk to us about is um doing a zoning analysis, I mean, that's something that, you know, was
I would be fair with that.
That was something, you know, so we could put an RFP together for it, so we can move ahead and know what we're, what we're, what we have and where we wanna be.
Is she proposing to do the whole town or to focus on the Hamlets?
I think on the Hamlets.
So I wanna talk to her about what the scope of that would be, I mean, I should be coming to meetings, I know the planning board was talking about it
Mm-hmm.
at the last meeting
They they're totally finished.
Right, and I think that's part of the
There, you on it might be a little different than what the town board was thinking.
And 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 that's, that's my concern is that that we we have we have entities going in different directions and I'd like to sort of bring everybody back in the fold and
Yeah.
and not waste our resources and sort of if if we need to do a study, I'm I'm fine with it, but I'd like to, you know, the I'd like to see what the RFP looks like, I'd like the town board to approve the direction and add, you know, and approve the funding, but like with the
I'd like to work with the planning board if they're having ideas, I'm not sure I've actually, so when was the meeting that they were discussing this?
The last meeting.
They The last meeting, there's there um
Turned out transition zones and
Oh, yeah, okay.
Things like that, and I, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're all together with it.
But I would, I don't know if what they were talking about was what the town board was thinking when we asked them, so look at it, so
Okay. I'd be, I I would be very interested to hear what they have to say.
Um, no, I could, I give you a little, I give you a little summary to look at, I'm What the planning board has been upset about, I'm sure a lot of people know this already, is that the, what's what's going in at the Whispering Pines uh space, uh the old prior Whispering Pines space is, what is it, a three-story building uh which would would
Well, how tall was it before?
It was an old house, it was like
It's it's
Well, it was a house, but how many, was it equivalent to three stories?
It was like, it was like a Victorian, it was
Maine, yeah.
Oh, I thought
Well, but here's a, here's a thing, they were able to do it as of right.
It was a big old
It's really
Absolutely, one story down
That's why they weren't before us, there was no zoning change, it was all as of right and
Excuse me.
We're talking along North Bedford Road?
Mm-hmm.
Like it's a Quaker
Yeah, it was, it was all, and
Like you know, there
Right next to Quaker Town.
It was all, it was all as of right and there was some planning board members uh who were upset about it, because even though it was as of right, they just personally didn't agree with it, because it was next to single-family homes and and they want, and and they worked it, they wanted, they wanted more of a tran-
Really, that's totally not my understanding of where they stand on that nation. No, that's not what
That's that's exactly, and they wanted, and they wanted, they wanted more of a transition zone, so
That's not my understanding at all. At all. Not well, that's, that doesn't sound right.
So what happens is, the question, the question is
It's not, no, no, it doesn't sound right.
We just hear, we just hear what it, whatever it is.
Yeah, so
The question, so the question, the question that we would have to do if if we, if there are transition zones if there are, if we focus on these transition zones would be either A, do we not allow uh like having a three-story building, residential building in in our downtown district, which is actually something that I think was pretty clear in the comprehensive plan, that we want more people living downtown and focus the density on downtown. Or do we maybe upzone the houses behind it, so that maybe they can, they can, we can allow two, two family homes in that one lot. So we're actually upzoning it, then you have your transition zone, cuz then you have your three-story building, you have your two-family house and then you have your single-family house, that's that's a transition zone. So the question is, if you're gonna have the transition zone, which way do you wanna go with it, you wanna down, downzone uh on, when you're on the street, or do you wanna upzone the properties behind it? There's different ways of achieving the transition zones.
I don't know, right, when I had heard, when I had heard they do want to care about it, they were frustrated that the first floor couldn't be apartments.
I do, I do, I just can't myself more, I understand.
because of the way, current zoning, I will watch the
I will watch the
I thought it was mixed
But that's, that's a separate issue, they were, they were, but that would be, but that would be, we could change that zoning
It's
Excuse
Right, I So That's what we like.
And then we could, they could actually do residential on the first floor, they were upset about that, but that's not the transition zone though, I don't think.
Right. And I, I mean, I see
No, I understand, but the transitions, my understanding is they felt like the potential of that site wasn't fully realized, is my understanding and that really one of the frustrations they had is the as of right in our current zoning actually made it more inflexible rather than making it the best possible solution.
Well
So I I will watch the meeting, so it's the last one, I'll watch
I, yeah, but I I
But there's two, there's two different issues, I think, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit there and and have it, I'm gonna go watch the meeting, but I think having a discussion about transition zones I mean, developing North Bedford under the current structure right now with the way that it sort of is you know, there might be opportunity up there.
Yeah, I just, um, I, so my only concern is that that the the planning board's sort of getting ahead of us and I'd like us to to be with them.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Or or or, yeah, or or catch up and that's, that's fine, but I just, um
Or catch up.
so the the part of the issue is, is that I've been asking Sabrina to do certain things to move ahead and, you know, she's been trying to get to them and the um the the task that she's been requested to do by the planning board is a big project.
Okay.
And um I really wanted the town board to be able to figure out if this is something that they're interested in exploring along with the zoning if we should have this conversation, taking issue in RFP, let's do this study, we can all, you know, get on the same page and let's let's get going with it.
But I think, I think there's, I I think there's two things involved and I think actually, what I'm saying, I think you're gonna agree with. I think the planning board did wanna have more residential on the first floor, I think the developer would love to have more residential on the first floor. So I think if we actually do zoning right away, before this project is built that they might actually be willing to change their plan, so that they actually can have residential on their first floor. I'm not just talking about this particular lot, I'm talking about zoning for the whole downtown.
Well, the, then then we have
That's gonna take a long time, cuz you have to do seeker for that.
Yeah.
Well, they they actually expressed, they there was
Or that our variance has to be granted by the zoning board.
Would it be possible for us to have a joint meeting?
We could definitely have a joint meeting, but the point is, by studying zoning, what I'm saying is by studying zoning, it actually would tie into that project and zoning was something we all agreed with that we should, is when we start, when we did our five things.
Need to review it, right.
And just one last thing, as far as your goals and objectives, what we could do is sort of the same approach we did with comp plan.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We sent that around, we all picked our first, our top five priorities.
Okay.
What we could do if your goals and objectives is, send it around, we don't pick our top five, we could prioritize it, we can do like a number system, I mean, you could, you're good at this, we can do like one through five or something, and we put a number next to it, for you, this is like the most important, it might be the number four, it's very important, but not the most important.
Okay.
Number three, it's like, you know, so we see our priorities.
I'm I'm fine with it, it's just, you know, like, we also wanted to use, you know, like like there was like a little spurt on wayfinding and then we sort of like, you know, pulled it back a little bit.
By the way, I, if Adam wants to put some signs up, you know, I think it's very reasonable and actually what I'd like to also give at least in conversation with Adam, is to also maybe include wayfinding within Millwood
Absolutely.
to increase the thing, because I think that the sort of tactical approach that Adam was talking about, post offices over here, parking lots over here, libraries over here. But his, I didn't think his list was an unreasonable list.
No, 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 it really isn't that big, you you know, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was a very reasonable list and I think um you know
It's it's sort of cute the way they do like the little stylus, you know.
But so wasn't the question before us whether we wanted to issue an RFP to bring in events
Branding, yeah, but I don't think we need to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, I think it was more, I think it was an umbrella to actually tackle the short-term things that he needs as a streetscape is going on.
Right, so everybody loved what the um Empire State Trail did, but that's a branding and it's a multi-gazillion dollar project and it's all through the state and and that's what they're doing, so if we wanted to do something on a smaller scale, then there are companies that they can do that.
Wasn't there one company that they sent us a sample, I forgot what it was, but they sent samples of the wayfinding signs
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think the, it's the same company that just did uh like the Bell School.
at another state, another
Is it today?
Was it the Bell School?
Only one
There was a company that did wayfinding signs for a town, they sent us what they look like, the guy sent like twenty pictures of twenty different signs, all like installed.
Right. Right.
And they were great. And so we could do that too, I mean, that's what And so we could do that too, I mean, that's what the streetscape committee did for our streetscape, they pretty much went around to other towns and looked at stuff, they just copied.
Right.
Right.
And we do the same thing, we just basically see what signs we like, borrow the communities and copy.
Right, should we make a resolution?
We have to
Does, does anybody wanna do that idea about Jill's goals and objectives, we circulated in this room
Yeah.
Yeah, especially because of the things that are on here that you
Yes, we have
Start the conversation.
Start the conversation.
Okay, I'll wait, I just got an email from Jerry, um, they wrapped up
And what about zoning, move ahead with this, to figure out, get Sabrina zoning?
What's what's else?
Well, I don't think we're
I want to show, we're not three
Yeah, we're just giving out
No, I said we get Sabrina.
We wrapped up Con Ed, Cut and Clear team supposedly, they're now working on restoration, and they don't need our staff for this.
Or come in
To get Sabrina's book to show.
They have everyone coming in at four A M. to begin active operations. They grind everything and, okay, that's it, so um Con Ed is, they've uh those crews that we had with Cut and Clear, they're done.
Yeah, now, um
Restoration.
continuing on restoration.
Riff it.
That's good.
I I know, I just want to know where they were, and that's what I I'm unable to find out.
They don't like that word so much, restoration.
So, but, uh, just, does that mean that they believe everything Cut and Clear has been done?
Teresa, come on, that's not a word. Restoration, not assessing. Not assessing.
Yes, so all roads are within our town.
It's
So if if there's somebody on Chatham and Moms who's saying, I have a tree and it's caught in wires and it's dangling at Seven Bridges Road or whatever
I like cutting clear.
But it's not blocking. It should no longer be there.
It's not blocking.
It's a prime If it's not blocked It's no longer blocking, so you could still have a tree that's dangling in wire, but cars can get like emergencies
Right. Right, so Car, car
So then what do they do at those one
So, no, they will come back for them, so there's something called open but with hazard.
Yeah.
Right.
And so a lot of the, that's all they would do for us under the tight circumstance, 'cause there are people without power, so
So if it's dangling, but there's still power, deleting it.
Where
Yes.
Let me tell you what they told me
Oh, makes sense, I gotta, I gotta
Or or they delete it, right.
No, 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 it makes sense, but it's dangling.
Right.
No, no, let me, let me tell you
We're still gonna get along, things matter.
But let me tell you what they told me today also, I should have mentioned this.
Yeah. Yeah.
What they told me today is, I mean, it's just a numbers game, you know that, it's a numbers game.
Yeah.
They do, they fix the adages where they can get the most people to restore, but what they also said is that what some towns are seeing is like, we may have a pole on one seventeen that's like broken. And and people may look at the pole, now, we had no restoration crews, so this wasn't really happening, but they may say, people may look at that pole and say, where's the Con Ed crews, that pole is still broken, and why aren't they fixing it? Now again, that wasn't our complaint, our complaint, we have no restoration crew. But they were saying this as if like our complaints were because there's a pole that's still broken on one seventeen, and their position was
Yeah.
we we don't care if there's a highly visible pole, because fixing that pole
Yeah.
is gonna take two crews
Yeah.
a gigantic truck
Yeah.
and a lot of work.
Yeah.
Our goal right now is to get the most bang for a buck, if we can go to some some street and flip a switch and get another ten people on, we're doing that. So they're not always doing the high, you know, like, like you said, unfortunately, that thing's gonna still dangle there, because it's not restoring people's power.
Right.
Right, so may I make a motion
And we have to
What we have to do, payment of claims
I said, may I make a motion and payment of claims?
Oh, oh, thank you.
I may make a motion to approve payment of claims, the amount of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents.
You wanna work with this, but Illusion, whatever.
Twenty seventeen expenditures totaling seventy-nine thousand four ninety-three thirty-seven, and twenty eighteen expenditures totaling five hundred and seventeen eight seventy-nine. Listed on the summary, pre-check writing report, the detailed voucher reports all dated March fifth, twenty eighteen. Checks will be issued mail to each claimant listed on Wednesday morning, seventy claims.
Little favor?
Hi.
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 C R.
Okay, um, Jerry, okay, so what are we doing
Serious. Kira. That's Sarah, Kira.
So what are we doing with um, with zoning, do, are we gonna do a joint meeting, are we gonna do a, I'll just wait for your comments back?
I I I I think a joint means a good idea, but I think the first thing we should maybe do is have Sabrina
We'll do the comments first.
Yeah.
and then we can get a joint meeting. So she can maybe, you know, give us a little background or whatever.
Just get our
Alright, and I'm gonna give Bob Kirkway a call, if you guys don't mind, and just reach out to him and tell him that, you know, we're gonna do something together with them, and that way, if they could just wait for us to catch up.
Sure, it makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. We're a little slow, we apologize, okay, very good.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Little favor?
I
Hi.